WCCO Radio, we wear all the hats. News beanie, sports cap, traffic helmet, weather hoodie, talk radio fedora. Sure, it's a weird look, but we pull it off. WCCO Radio, every hat for every hour.
You're thinking about it. Jason's talking about it. There are no breaks on bold takes here. Buckle up. This is drive time with the Russia. Now, live from Minnesota's biggest microphone, here's Jason to Russia.
All right, we are live at the Minnesota State Fair. It's so good to see all of you. The sun is out. It's Friday. The long weekend is here. A great crowd with us in front of the WCCO radio booth, our final broadcast from the fair. The station will be out here this weekend. We'll have shows Saturday and Blaise will be out here on Sunday with the Sunday take as well. So lots of opportunities to run into the WCCO operation, but this is it for us, Dan.
You promise? Are you sure?
We will be working on Labor Day. You and I will.
Yes, we will, yes.
After the Twins game.
But not here.
What we're hoping for is a very long Twins game. And then we don't have to.
Lots of extra innings, you know, yeah, very exciting.
Then we don't have to work.
That's that's kind of part of it, yes.
That is how that is for sure. Uh, I want to start with honestly, something that has surprised me on two levels over the last 20 minutes or so. The governor, Tim Walz, on X posted that it's time for the state to do more to fight gun violence. And I saw that post and my immediate thought was, well, that certainly sounds like Governor Tim Walz is going to run again. The exact quote was, "It's time to take serious action at the state Capitol to address gun violence." And we'll talk to Kendall Qualls in about 20 minutes, who is one of the Republicans running for governor. And he'll join us at the fair because honestly, the Republicans in the aftermath of the shooting at Annunciation Catholic Church and School have not really said much about policy. And, and to a certain degree, I think a lot of us who follow these heartbreaking stories over the years, we go into this routine, right? The people on the left say, "We need to change gun laws." The people on the right say, "We need to do more for mental health." And all the rest of us look at it and say, "Do something. Do something." And nothing happens. The other update is that the governor is getting ready for a special session on gun laws next month. So it is to me, I don't know, it always takes something horrific. But it's striking that it takes something horrific in our own state for the governor, for legislators to step up and say, "We need to try something. We need to change the law." And my question to you at 651-461-9226 is pretty simple. Up or down? Are you in favor or are you against Minnesota passing a ban on assault weapon? There have been two conversations since what happened at that Catholic church. Incidentally, I read today that this was the first shooting in a Catholic church ever in America, which, which, I don't know. I don't know how to feel about that, but you're, but it is, it is.
Well, it's a reminder that there isn't any place that's truly safe.
Right. So, you know, Republicans are responding already. If this were serious and not a partisan stunt, the governor would be calling Republicans, starting with the Speaker of the House. I suppose my response would be, we, we, where have the Republicans been? And I'll ask Kendall Qualls this. Because Democrats came out yesterday and said, "We want an assault weapons ban." They had a news conference. They were organized. They had a message. What is the, what is the other message? What is the, what is the policy? Because I don't know if we are, I guess, are we okay with just saying like, "Well, this is part of life"? That there's nothing we can do about it? And that, at least so far, seems to be the implicit message by not really saying anything.
If I was running the Republican Party, my counter to this idea of an assault weapons ban, which I'm sure is going absolutely nowhere, uh, would be a huge overhaul in the state's mental health resources. A moonshot when it comes to mental health, because that's the argument you see. It's not about guns, it's about mental health.
That's always the argument, right.
Okay, fine. Let's make going to see therapists as easy as going to a minute clinic. How do we do that? How do we invest the resources and get the right number of folks out there in the mental health industry to help people out? If it's about mental health, let's do something. That's what they should be doing. Say, "No, it's not about guns. Here's what we're going to do. This is the plan." Instead of just saying no to the gun thing, which I understand that's their lobby. That's what they're going to do. But say, "No, but this is what we should be doing."
Well, and I also think, like, there are practical questions about what weapons get included in an assault weapon ban? What is an assault weapon? Is, is that going to stop this sort of thing? The text line is lighting up with support for banning assault weapons. We did have that here in the United States at one point. Ban assault weapons, another texture. Pass the strongest ban possible on assault weapons. Totally support getting rid of assault weapons in favor. I support gun rights and I'm in favor of banning assault weapons. It is interesting. I mean, this could be, to me, I say, "Why not both?", right? You say like, "The, the opposing idea might be increasing access to mental health."
Yep.
The reality is that is very expensive and it's also a slower process. And same with banning assault weapons. There are a lot of weapons out there, right? And if someone's determined enough, they will get it. And also, let's make it harder. Let's make it harder. In this case, the shooter at the, at that school bought those weapons, according to the Minneapolis Police Chief. He bought those weapons recently and he bought those weapons legally. And so if you did have an assault weapons ban, well, now, now you're slowing the process down at least.
I, I mean, I understand the argument and, you know, personally, in terms of policy, I'm, I would have no problem with an assault weapons ban. And last I checked, the Minnesota State House is still split evenly down the middle, right? Which means an assault weapons ban is not going to be passing the Minnesota House. I'm in favor of getting something that we can come together and agree on done, which I think you could, there'd be, there's, there ought to be plenty of Democrats that would agree that we should be investing in mental health resources in the state of Minnesota. And so if that's the Republican position, then let's do that. Let's do, you said it earlier. Let's do something. An assault weapons ban isn't going to happen.
One of the things that is problematic in the idea of saying today that you're going to increase access to mental health is that a lot of the mental health treatment in our state right now is paid for through Medicaid. And we just saw at the federal level, a massive change in funding for Medicaid. So we got a web of issues to try to figure some of this stuff out.
And we have a lot of smart people at the state Capitol that can work through those issues and know how those policies work. And we can do something.
Yeah, I think so too. Tax the hell out of guns to fund mental health, says one texture. I do think those magazine capacity limits, if you're going to get anywhere, I feel like that has the best chance of reaching some compromise. Where, to me, my reading of the Bill of Rights, you know, they, there, there was no conception of the type of weapons that we have today. Right? And I, I do confess, sometimes I find myself feeling that all Americans should have the right to have a musket. Right? Like, let's go back to what the, if we want original intent.
Get one of the front loaders, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's so difficult to go back to what the founding fathers of our country were conceiving, because there's no way that they were conceiving of the type. What they were conceiving of, though, was an ability to protect yourself and frankly, largely to protect yourself against an invasion, invading force.
Right. That would be the pushback.
And there is a theory that like, part of the reason that we have the right to bear arms in this country, that that ability has kept us from tyranny, that you end up with your own government not having full control because they know that the citizens would have the ability to rise up.
The bottom line to me, and I hate feeling cynical about this, but the bottom line to me is this is far from the first time that we've seen school kids get slaughtered. And we haven't made buckus in terms of changing gun laws prior to now. The gun lobby has stood up against every single attempt to try and make any meaningful change in gun laws in this country. And I'm just tired of beating my head against that wall. So if there's something else we can try, if there's something else we can come to go gather over, then let's devote our energy there instead of having the same gunfight every single time.
Well, we have, I do think it's unfair to say we haven't changed any laws, because over the last decade, we have. In this state, we have red flag laws. We have some of the strongest red flag laws in the country, which still don't accomplish. You know, here we have someone who certainly you think like, would have qualified for a red flag type situation. But if nobody turns you in or nobody files the thing and they're, then, then what do you, where do you get? We have universal background checks. We have straw purchases that are banned and of course, still happen, but they are illegal. So we have made some changes in gun laws.
When we had the trifecta, we don't have that now. And this is a big leap.
But those laws are in effect.
Those, this is a big leap, trying to do an assault weapons ban is a big leap.
Well, you know what didn't happen when we had a trifecta and came up? An assault weapons ban.
Yeah.
We'll break your tax, lots of tax, lots of ideas coming in. Keep them coming. 651-461-9226. Drive time back, back in a minute, live at the state fair here on CCO.
You're listening to Drive Time with the Russia, live at the fair. Presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get together, meet at Andy's.
All right, Jason here with the number one thing people have been asking me at the state fair, people coming up and they're like, "Jason, you really look like you lost 40 pounds with Libya Weight Control Centers." It is real. These commercials don't lie. You guys get the fact jacket by seeing me out here at the fair. And one of the most gratifying things for me out here has been meeting all the people that Libya has changed their life as well. It's Jason for Libya Weight Control Centers. A woman came up to us yesterday and said she lost 100 pounds on Libya. Amazing. You think about the better sleep, the better exercise, the better health you have. That's what Libya is really all about. I lost 45 pounds. I've kept that weight off. It's a team effort. It takes, uh, for me, the team at Libya's Weight Control Center in Coon Rapids. Libya's got telehealth, so maybe you live far from a center. They'll take care of you that way, but you probably live close to one. Medical weight loss, they're all over it. Why wouldn't you go to the experts who have been helping people lose weight and keep it off for more than 15 years? GLP-1 weight loss medication, starting at $149 a month. If you want to do the nutrition plan that I did, half off your entire program. Reach out today. Don't wait, don't wait. Let's get started on that sexy fall bod. Okay, that's, everybody says summer, it's too late. Fall, get it going. Today is the day. Don't wait for another one. Libya.com or call 855-GO-LIVIA.
In construction, things don't always go according to plan. Delays, disputes, unpaid invoices, they can cost you big. That's where Helmut and Johnson comes in. Our construction law team focuses on contracts, litigation, lien claims and more. Whether you're a contractor, developer or supplier, we've got your back. Protect your project, protect your business. Helmut and Johnson, on your side, at your side. Visit hjlawfirm.com. That's hjlawfirm.com.
Advantage Seamless Gutters is now Advantage Home Pros. New look, same pros, still locally owned and now taking care of all your gutter and roofing needs. Don't spend your weekends on a ladder cleaning your gutters when you could be spending time with family and planning that summer trip. Trust your local gutter pros, Advantage Home Pros. Now your local custom roofing pros. With the highest quality workmanship and materials, our trained, knowledgeable local pros can handle it all. Trust the pros. AdvantageHomePros.com.
Let me tell you about this new Pretzel Cheddar Club. Hey, I'm Carlos.
And I'm Ebony. And a little thing we love about the Chick-fil-A Pretzel Cheddar Club
is the tangy Dijon with the pretzel bun. It takes it to a whole nother level.
It goes perfectly with the chicken and the cheddar cheese and the bacon.
Man, you know how much you love bacon. And I love the different varieties, grilled, spicy, original. It gets you nice and excited for fall.
Order the Pretzel Cheddar Club with Cherry Berry and Sprite for a limited time on the Chick-fil-A app. Real guests paid for their testimonials.
There's nothing like when you get that part from eBay and it just fits. Yeah, the first time. So you can do less of this and get right back to more of this. At eBay, you'll find all the parts you need, guaranteed to fit at prices you'll love. Sounds good, doesn't it? eBay, things people love. Eligible items only. Exclusions apply.
Hi, Ryan O'Neal with the Minnesota Real Estate Team and RE/MAX Advantage Plus. Our team is here to help you with any real estate questions you may have about buying, selling or investing. Our approach is simple. We focus on you and your best interests. No hard sales pitch, rush or pressure. We work on your timeline. 612-294-6949, MNRealestateShow.com. That's 612-294-6949.
Most people have no idea there's an invisible gap in their home's protection. This invisible threat is house stealing. Con artists pick a house. They transfer the deed of this house into their name by obtaining the forms, using the fake IDs and filing the paperwork with proper authorities. Now they own the home. Protect your home from this invisible gap. Check on your home's title right now at HomeTitleLock.com. Be sure to use promo code RADIO and they will send you a complete title scan of your home's title and your first 30 days of triple lock title protection is free. HomeTitleLock.com.
This Labor Day weekend, we're celebrating Bob's Discount Furniture's 200th Store Milestone with the entire Bob's family across the country.
For more than 30 years, we've believed everyone deserves the home they love. That's why we brought our everyday low prices on furniture, mattresses and more to over 200 locations from coast to coast and counting. Not to mention free treats for the whole family in our cafes. Celebrate Bob's Discount Furniture's 200th Store Milestone this Labor Day weekend.
CCO State Fair coverage from the great Minnesota get together is built by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years and by the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
We're live at the state fair reacting to the breaking news. Multiple media organizations reporting that the governor is planning for a special session on guns in the wake of the Annunciation School shooting. Two children dead, 10-year-old and eight-year-old. And the parents of one of those victims was rather explicit in calling for action, not, uh, not to get caught up in sort of the debate that, you know, Dan, you and I weighed in on this, uh, initially, this idea as to whether thoughts and prayers should be dismissed.
Right.
And I will say like, it is a little annoying to me that we're still arguing about that.
It's annoying we ever argued about it, but yeah.
But it's not the primary issue, right? Like, so it's a, it's one of those things that gets people riled up. And you say like, "Oh, the Democrats don't want us to pray." And you're like, "Well, come on." Like that's, it's just silly. It's a way to talk about this generally without actually talking about what we should do.
Talking about anything important, exactly.
So lots of questions. Now, the reality of Minnesota, here's the reality for listeners that are, have a life and are not, uh, you know, obsessing about the legislative breakdown in Minnesota. The Senate is controlled by Democrats in Minnesota by one vote. The House is expected to be tied after a special election in September. So you would need some bipartisan support to get anything done. So.
And heading into an election this fall, I mean.
So what this is about, in my view, just quick analysis, what this is about is getting everybody on the record.
Yeah.
And now you, and now you campaign. But the danger in calling a special session is that you sort of then turn things over to the legislators and they could keep this thing going until February.
If they wanted to, yep.
Lots of texts coming in about gun laws, about the challenge. I, I do think, look, banning assault weapons is very difficult. And I know this is not a cop out. This is not me saying I don't think we should. But it is saying like, all right, an AR-15, which was used in the shooting. Is that an assault weapon? Well, under some definitions, yes. Under some definitions, no. It depends how it's used. Is an assault weapon, uh, sort of a, you know what, when you see it scenario? I think a lot of us feel that way. It feels like a video game gun.
Feels that way, but you can't legislate feelings.
And when you define it, it becomes difficult. So again, I'm not like trying to make excuses, but this is when you get into the weeds of legislation, and we talked about this with the Senate Majority Leader yesterday, that this is sort of the problem. Texters saying that. The problem is defining assault rifle. Magazine capacity is doable, however. Another texture, right to own weapons? Yes, not the right to own any weapon. And what happened to the right to life to be safe? I mean, it is, we're balancing competing interests, right?
Yep.
Uh, uh, we're balancing freedom. This is a free country. We are balancing a right that's enshrined in the Constitution. So whenever you're going to abridge that, it's more serious. It is more serious.
The way that we legislate these days, which is all about purity tests and holding people's feet to the fire and never, ever, ever compromising, it makes legislating almost impossible. At least in any meaningful way.
I think we're to the point though, that, that sometime, doing something for the feeling and doing something that feels like we're being responsive to the pain that, that so many are feeling in our community, maybe is, maybe is enough? Try it for five years and if it, if it works, renew it. And if it doesn't work, get rid of it. I don't know what, I mean, what, obviously.
Again, I'm with you on this. I just, I, you know, seeing how politics has worked recently, I'm dubious.
No, you're being, you're being the reality check. I'm talking about the should we at this point.
Oh yeah, no, I mean, I'm with you 100% should we, but.
Texters say semi-automatic shotguns do the same thing as an AR-15. So we can do this to death.
Exactly.
We can do this to death, right? Like, and it is accurate. Also, it is accurate. Like, this is the problem with this. My view on gun laws is that the more you can slow someone down, the better chance you have catching a madman or madwoman who decides that now is the time I'm going to take a bunch of people out. So the more you can have waiting lists that slow things down. I believe that law-abiding citizens are, are, I mean, duh, are never the problem. Right? Someone who goes to trouble to do this the right way, they are never the, the problem. But when you got somebody who's determined to kill in, in large numbers, you know, this, this, this killer never, uh, this killer never had any encounter with law enforcement before. So your only hope with this particular killer would have been somebody intervening on a red flag mental health perspective or or slowing it down. We're like, oh, you want to buy, maybe you say, "If you want to buy a certain type of gun, you gotta wait." I mean, you already have a waiting period for a handgun in Minnesota, I believe. But you can go to a pawn shop and buy an AR-15 today. If your background check gets approved, you can buy that. And so, you know, can we slow it down? I guess that's what I'm saying. Slow it down a month. Do you have a constitutional right to buy a gun in 12 days? No. How about a month? I don't know. I don't know what the number is, but anything you can do to try to slow things down, I'm intrigued. I'm intrigued. It's 3:30. We'll ask Kendall Qualls, uh, Republican candidate for governor. What does he think? What does he think we should do? What does he think about, uh, the breaking news that the governor is planning for a special session? We'll get his perspective in just a minute and on other topics throughout Minnesota as well. Live at the state fair, it's Friday, it's sunny, it's beautiful. We're glad to have you guys here and we're glad to have you listening as well here on CCO.
You're listening to Drive Time with the Russia, live at the fair. Presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get together, be sure to meet at Andy's.
All right, Jason back with you and at the state fair, when you think about all of the fun, you think about the food, you think about the farmers, I hope. One of the great things about being out here is the chance, you know, if you're a city kid, you can go and talk to one of the great Minnesota pig farmers. When I talk about Minnesota pork, yes, I'm talking about delicious pork chops. I have one for lunch today. But I'm really talking about the people. Minnesota pork is 3,000 family farmers every corner of this state. They care so much about Minnesota. They care so much about continuing to have that agriculture quality of life that makes our state special. Those family farmers want you not just to get the pork chop on the stick over here, but they want you to stop by, see the biggest boar at the fair, 902 pounds, see the little piglets and talk to farmers. What are you guys thinking about? What are you guys worried about? What could we do as city folk to help you out? Go meet your farmer. And this weekend, go support that farmer by going to the grocery store, the butcher shop. And let's have Minnesota pork for dinner tonight. Oh yeah.
Financial literacy, it's amazing they don't teach it in school. Listen to the Investing with Confidence show every Sunday at 11:00 PM and join us for a free investing class by texting the word INVESTING to the number 210-210. Take action today and make a change for tomorrow. Text the word INVESTING to the number 210-210 today.
Millions of Americans use credit cards to purchase goods every day. The Durbin-Marshall credit card mandates put the secure transactions you rely on at risk, leaving you vulnerable to hackers and foreign cyber criminals that want your data. Hackers win. You lose. Guard your card before it's too late. Tell Congress your data security is not for sale and oppose the Durbin-Marshall credit card mandates.
Paid for by Electronic Payments Coalition.
Coming to the Twin Cities in December, it's the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
He scores! Team USA has got back to back.
Tomorrow's superstars of the NHL will be in your backyard as Team USA looks for a third consecutive goal.
There's so much pride involved. You know, it's, it's game seven every single night. Everybody's playing for that gold medal.
Watch USA fight for gold in every preliminary game. Find out at worldjuniorsMN26.com.
Actual price will depend on product and subscription plan. Featured products are compounded drug products, which the FDA does not approve or verify for safety, effectiveness or quality. Prescription products require an online consultation with a healthcare provider who will determine if appropriate. See website for details, restrictions and important safety information.
Want to boost in and out of the bedroom? Hims has you covered. Introducing a new two-in-one approach to level up your game. Tadalifil for better bedroom performance and zinc for testosterone support. Put it all together and you've got what you need to turn things all the way up. Getting started is simple. Just go to hims.com/joy to start your free online visit. Through Hims, you can access ED treatments, including pills, chews and more. 100% online. No office visits, no pharmacy lines. Just fill out a simple intake form and a licensed medical provider will determine if treatments right for you. If prescribed, it ships free and discreetly to your door. Find affordable treatment options at up to 95% less than brand names at hims.com/joy. That's hims.com/joy, H-I-M-S.com/J-O-Y.
A picture is worth a thousand words. And if you want to sell your home for the most money possible, the right exterior photographs can get you thousands of dollars more. Contact my friend, the good neighbor agent, John Schuster of the John Schuster Group Coldwell Banker Realty. If you're thinking about selling your home next year, those pictures might be taken in the winter and your home is just not going to look as warm and inviting if there's snow on the ground. This month only, John will send out his professional exterior photographer and it's going to let you show off your home while your lawn and garden are looking their best. No out-of-pocket costs. Also, a free staging consultation if you sign up this month. No obligation to hire John to sell your home either. You should, but he'll still be a good neighbor and help you out even if you choose someone else. Contact John, 952-222-9000, online, johnschustergroup.com.
Terms and conditions may apply.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Talked about Chef IQ Sense, eastbound 94 at Stelling Avenue, crash off to the right side, slowing it down as we make way toward Highway 280. And then a crash up ahead, East 94 on the ramp, the Highway 61 southbound block in the left lane. But the mainline of East 94 is jammed up as we move past Marion Street. But the main line of East 94 is jammed up as we move past Marion Street, 494 westbound near Highway 5. Crash off to the right side, slowing it down as you come down from Pilot Knob Road. Chef IQ Sense is a wireless cooking thermometer that perfectly cooks your food. Chef IQ probe is inserted into your food and connects to the Chef IQ app to ensure you never under or overcook your food. It's that simple. Order now on chefiq.com with code WCCO for 15% off. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830, WCCO.
With a well-designed will, trust, and estate plan, you can have peace of mind. Choose Matt Gutman of Gutman Law to give yourself peace of mind. Call him now, 612-895-1616, at gutmanlaw.com. Gutman Law, peace of mind today for tomorrow.
Now the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
All right, forecast brought to you by Gutman Law, Will's Trust and Probe Law at gutmanlaw.com. Tonight, the low will be around 60. Nice night to sleep with those windows open. Tomorrow and Sunday at the fair, about the same, it'll be right around 80 degrees, 78, 79, 80, should be perfect. So enjoy it. Labor Day, slight chance of showers in the afternoon. Right now at the state fair, it's 76 degrees here on CCO.
Live from the Minnesota State Fair, News Talk 830, WCCO's broadcasts are built by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and by the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
We have Republican candidate for governor Kendall Qualls with us here at WCCO. Kendall, it's nice to see you.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
You just were streaming live on YouTube at the WCCO radio channel and Kendall just took the laptop and turned it away from him. Because you didn't want to see your face. You're a good-looking guy. I don't know what you're talking about.
About that. So it's great.
Kendall Qualls ran for governor as a Republican once before, running again.
Right.
This year, I'll, I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit about yourself and because many listeners maybe introduced you for the first time, even though you've run before and you've been part of public life here in Minnesota. But I want to ask you about the breaking news that we talked about over the last hour.
Sure.
The governor saying that he is at least making calls and making preparation to have a special session to address gun laws in Minnesota. We don't know exactly what he had in mind, but yesterday, a bunch of Democrats, most of the major Democrats in Minnesota stood up and said, we need to ban assault weapons and we need to limit magazine capacity.
Right.
What do you, what do you say to that?
Yeah, if he's going to call a special session, I believe the first thing of order should be the $50 million that the Catholic leadership requested to provide security for a lot of the private schools, the charter schools, they requested that two years ago, never got it. So that should be, that should come in. When it comes to the 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 ban or the gun control law, there's no studies anywhere that shows that any of those type of laws create any type of change in the public safety disorder. Not in Chicago, not in Washington DC, not anyplace else in the country.
Well, crime did drop when we had an assault weapons ban on the federal level.
No, it didn't. It didn't. It actually, when you go back to that, you look at that data, there was no difference pre, post, long-term at all.
So what, what gun law would you be willing to change?
Um, we don't need to change the gun laws. We need to change locking up criminals. We need those people that, look.
Well, that wouldn't help with any of these school shootings. That for sure, I agree when you're talking about street crime, which is a major.
Great. I'm glad we can agree on that.
Major issue.
Here's the issue. Less than 2% of the people that get arrested for gun crimes are law-abiding, card-carrying, permit-carrying citizens.
Right.
So it's not the people that have the permits and following laws, it's those that are not following the laws.
Right. So what?
You can't govern against that.
So what do we, what do we do when it comes to the shooting we had in Minneapolis? Enunciation Catholic school. I don't know that having extra money for security would have made a difference for somebody who's standing outside. Maybe it would, maybe it wasn't.
That's a huge assumption to make. Um, they ask.
What would you do? What would you?
I mean, because because those same security measures are in public schools. Okay, so there is a need for beefing up security and so that's all.
So you think the state should pay for security for private schools and for Catholic schools?
Well, unless, unless we're saying we only care about the security of the kids in public school and no one else. I don't think that's the message we want to send to our state.
Well, that's, so you, you do think any private school, any religion, the state should fund?
That, you know what, the Catholic leadership team, they asked for the funding, not just for Catholic schools. They said Catholic schools, Jewish schools, Muslim schools, Christian.
And you think you support that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Kendall Qualls is with us, Republican candidate for governor. So when it comes to, so you support more money to secure the schools?
Correct.
Any limiting the size of magazines, so you'd have to reload more often?
There's been no evidence that shows that any of that makes a difference. Um, what, what, what people do and when they, even if you limit the magazines, they use, you know, duct tape to wrap around two or three magazines.
So we're just, we're just, I, I, I think many Minnesotans right now, right in the wake of the shooting, are looking for elected officials, public people to have some stuff, right? Like, most of us, we don't know what the answer is, but we want something.
Now, but we do know what some of the answer is. When we look at violent criminals that have multiple, even the ones that have, like this situation where they committed suicide, gun violence, it doesn't matter black or white, there's one common denominator, fatherless homes. We don't want, we don't want to talk about the root cause of this. I'm talking, these are long-term root cause issues. The United States has the largest percentage of children that grow up without fathers than any country in the world, times three. And that's from the Pew Research Center from 2019.
Right.
And so, so do we think that manifests itself in anything? We're seeing it playing out in our streets and as well as a consistent denominator with these school shooters.
So as governor, what would you do to get more two-parent homes?
Um, first of all, look, there's, there's, there's a certain amount of governance you can do, but here's one thing. Right now, if you're, if you live together, you've got more of a tax advantage if you're live together than if you're married. The government should be supplementing those institutions that provide stability, calmness, and, and, and all the things that's positive in our culture. We don't financially incentivize marriage and young families.
So Kendall, I got to be honest, I think if people are, if you're a parent of one of these kids who was in that church when, when, when someone came and opened fire and the solution being brought forward is we need more fathers in homes, like that just doesn't feel like.
Now, Jason, you're being disingenuous, okay? I said there's short-term, long-term. Short-term is the security that I mentioned when we talked about very upfront. That's short-term.
Security.
Okay. Long-term, we have to look at what's the common denominator in all these shooters? If we want to be thoughtful, if we want to have fact-based solutions, let's start there.
Yeah.
But the left doesn't want to have that conversation because it brings back the patriarchy.
I mean, I totally agree that the optimal scenario for kids is a double-parent mom-dad home. I think the data totally is with that.
Well, you're right, but here's a scenario, Jason. You know what, you're one of the few people that I've ever talked to, what I would call legacy media that admit that. But here's, in the black community, when I was a kid, 80% of black families were two-parent families. Today, they're 80% fatherless homes and there hasn't been one initiative that reversed the trend and no reporter ever talked about that decline.
What would you do?
But no, wait a minute, I want to stop. If I was, if I was, if I was, if I, if the black community was the spotted owl gray wolf, there would be a lot more attention on that. There would be galas, help save the black family bumper stickers next to Free Tibet. But there's never been one initiative or attention posed to that one crisis in the culture.
So what do you want to do with it?
If there should be a lot more attention around this problem and the statistic that shows when these black kids are in two-parent families, low incidence with crime, low incidence with police officers, the academic disparities disappear, financial disparities, everything.
Kendall Qualls is with us, running for governor as a Republican here in Minnesota. Couple other candidates throwing their name in the hat, all of that. I do want to ask you about crime because, you know, before this school shooting on Monday, we had just a hellacious violent 24 hours in Minneapolis.
That's right.
That felt like there were three shootings and obviously understandably, there's a massive investigation to figure out what's going on.
Right.
And what led to the shooting at Annunciation Catholic. But I also don't want to forget about the fact that my guess is that was gang warfare.
Right.
Where somebody was shot, then there was retaliation, then there was another retaliation, three incidents.
That's right.
Uh, what, what can the state do better? What does a Kendall Qualls do to address that sort of stuff?
Well, we do what we used to do in this state and in this city. Look, let me, let's only set the tables, so frame of reference. In October of 2009, Forbes Magazine rated 40 different cities. Minneapolis was rated number one for the safest and safest city with the best quality of life. Number one. We didn't used to live like this today. This has happened because of a leadership directive on, on how and what, how they treat criminals and all. I mean, this is being done by a handful of people. And so that's to set the, set the framework for what did we used to be like literally five to six years ago. What I would do differently is this. Good law enforcement officers are not going to put their life on the line for the city council of the Twin Cities. They have no respect for them. They have no respect for their lives. They want to defund them and they, they, they call them bad names. But they have respect for me and I, my leadership. We'll recruit 500 law enforcement officers at the state level and we'll redeploy them into the Twin Cities, whether the city council wants them there or not.
Kendall Qualls is with us. I would say like that, when you say the city council wants to defund the police in Minneapolis, what do you mean?
You, we, we have, we have already had, I mean, we have city council members that pushed that, that pushed that vote. I mean, we had.
Four or five years ago, right?
Four or five years ago, right?
But no one's proposing that today.
Well, you know what? Because it failed. That, that, that ballot should have failed.
Isn't that how this works? You propose a dumb idea, the people say no, and now we move forward. But to act like that's still on the table, I don't know.
We have politicians that have shown such deep lack of respect for police officers. No one wants to put their lives on the line on the, for the city of Minneapolis or St. Paul. And we have officers that have been targeted and assassinated.
Let's talk about education because today, another report coming out looking at test scores that post-pandemic, they went down and they've stayed down. There's still a flat.
That's right.
I do think, you know, when we're talking about long-term solutions to crime, I think long-term solutions, you talk about family structure. I also think poverty, opportunity. I think that our education, educational system not being the jewel that it once was.
Right.
Is going to lead to more crime. What, what does Kendall Qualls do to, to turn around test scores?
So here's a scenario on this one. To your point, we used to have the top five public school system in the nation, even despite the disparities of families, right? Even with that, because we had a focus and we had a priority around academic excellence, discipline in schools. We would, we would expel the troublemakers. We wouldn't make, you know, appeasement for them. And so that's, that's the type of back-to-basics we need. We didn't, we weren't focused on pronouns. We didn't have Black Lives Matter signs all over, you know, in buildings. And we weren't, we weren't marketing this whole gender fluidity thing in the elementary schools. Today, according to the, I believe it was the Annie E. Casey Foundation, 68% of our kids in Minnesota in fourth grade cannot read a grade level. 68%, not in Minneapolis, entire state. We, we, our priorities are not on the basics and that's what we would go, we would go back to the basics.
You know, obviously, funding is something that becomes a question and what the federal government is doing. The state is concerned that we're going to end up with less money for Medicaid, for Minnesota Care, for food benefits, these sorts of things. What, how do you look at what the Trump administration, administration has been doing in their first several months?
They've been doing a fantastic job in the first several months. It's amazing, it's amazing. The, the border crisis just disappeared. It's, it's like Koudini came in and made it, made it go away because it always could have been controlled by the previous administration. They chose not to. So border security, people, people are surprised to see how well and strong the economy is. I think that was the number one thing that people wanted, to make sure that we get our economy back in shape, the reduction of inflation, all those things have all been working and hitting on all cylinders.
Yeah, but the states may end up holding some of the, the bag for this, so.
No, look, we can control our, our issues here. Um, look, when you have a billion dollars that have been wasted in fraud and it doesn't even touch any of the programs, I think we, they have a lot, they, they shouldn't be like throwing stones.
Yeah. Fraud is a major issue for sure.
Absolutely is a major issue.
Kendall Qualls, we're out of time, but I really appreciate it. We'll talk more as we get closer. I know, I know.
All right, all right. I'll be back anytime. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thanks, Kendall. 3:51. Back in just a minute here at CCO.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRushia, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get-together, meet at Andy's.
All right, Jason back here at the state fair and you just heard big voice guy telling you to meet at Andy's. I love Andy's Grill. The Andy's family, they are awesome. Four generations of family. Four generations of family, kind of running this business right at the state fair. They all come together, the family's all down there. At the top of every hour, they play Grease Lightning and everybody dances. It's just a great vibe. It's a great throwback. But they're also focused, looking forward on new innovations with food this year. They've got a, do you guys like this, like the slushies? There are slushies all over the place. Pineapple upside-down cake slushy, why not? They are legendary for being the first to create a chocolate chip cookie beer, which the first time I had it, it's got like little chocolate chips around the rim. I was like, I don't know about this. And then you try that beer, you're like, oh, baby, it is delicious. Andy's Grill, they're right down by the fresh french fries and all of the big rides. Go check them out. Meet me at Andy's.
In business, timing is everything. When it's time to buy, sell, or merge, you need a legal team that moves fast. Think smart and protects every dollar. At Helmuth and Johnson, we have over 30 years of experience in mergers and acquisitions that get results. No red tape, no surprises, just smart strategy and airtight execution. Big deals need bold lawyers. Helmuth and Johnson, on your side, at your side. Visit hjlawfirm.com. That's hjlawfirm.com.
Fair food, fair fun, and fair-only savings. By the Yard's Minnesota State Fair Sale is here, the sale everyone waits for. For 30 years, they've built premium, maintenance-free outdoor furniture right here in Minnesota. It's still the best seat at the fair. Find them in the corner of the 4-H building in Cosgrove and get fair-only pricing now through September 2nd. Or stop by the showrooms, Woodbury, Maple Grove, or Jordan. With By the Yard, life is better outdoors.
Representative Tom Emmer stopped a massive tax hike by voting to make the 20% small business tax deduction permanent. This means Minnesota's small businesses can grow, hire, and invest in our communities. Visit smallbusinessdeduction.com and thank Representative Emmer for protecting America's small businesses. Paid for by the National Federation of Independent Business.
Shop incredible end of summer savings at the Scandinavian Designs Labor Day Sale. For a limited time, take up to 70% off select modern furniture and decor for every room in your home, including living room, bedroom, dining room, and more. This is the perfect opportunity to get your space prepped for the party season ahead. Stop by your local showroom today or shop online at scandinaviandesigns.com. Scandinavian Designs, we make it simple, you make it home.
Online security is a must and millions are choosing NordVPN to stay safer and more private online. And you can do that, too. Get NordVPN with 77% off and up to three months extra. NordVPN will encrypt your online traffic from data snoopers and internet service providers, while NordVPN's Threat Protection Pro will reduce risk of phishing and alert you about the fake online shops and known scams. And that's not all. If your email address is leaked to the dark web, you will get an instant notification from the dark web monitor and act accordingly. Get the special NordVPN deal today at nordvpn.com. This offer includes a 77% discount on a two-year plan and up to three extra months. Savings and additional terms apply and can be found on nordvpn.com. The offer is valid until October 15th.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Things are slow. East 94 is make way toward St. Paul. Crash at Snelling's cleared and the crash east 94 as you head out toward Highway 61. That's cleared as well, but it's slowed the entire run. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830, WCCO.
Mike Lynch here, and it goes without saying that Sweet Martha's Cookies at the Minnesota State Fair are the best. But did you know you could have Sweet Martha's Cookies year-round? That's right. Sweet Martha's Cookie Dough available in all kinds of flavors in the frozen food department of your favorite grocery store.
Now the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
Weather brought to us by Sweet Martha's Cookies. Tonight, mostly cloudy, 61. Tomorrow and Sunday, about the same, 80 degrees for the high. Right now, it is 78 here on CCO. Coming up, live at the state fair, we are going to play America's slowest-growing afternoon card-related game. It's called Card D Sharks. So if you're at the fair, we're going to need two contestants to play for $50. And our buddy Kristen is here to read her, her original poem live for us. She submits the poem every week, so we're so excited for that. That's coming up. Also want to let you know, if you are a Black Keys fan, you can see the Black Keys live in concert at the Armory next Saturday night. We're giving away six pairs of tickets in a random drawing. So you got to go to wccoradio.com/contest, click on the Black Keys contest link to enter. You got till midnight Tuesday, so let's get going. WCCORadio.com/contest.
Actual price will depend on product and subscription plan feature. Products or compounded drug products, which the FDA does not approve or verify for safety, effectiveness, or quality. Prescription products require an online consultation with a healthcare provider who will determine if appropriate. See website for details, restrictions, and important safety information.
Want to boost in and out of the bedroom? Hims has you covered. Introducing a new two-in-one approach to level up your game. Tadalfil for better bedroom performance and zinc for testosterone support. Put it all together and you've got what you need to turn things all the way up. Getting started is simple. Just go to hims.com/joy to start your free online visit. Through Hims, you can access ED treatments including pills, chews, and more, 100% online. No office visits, no pharmacy lines. Just fill out a simple intake form and a licensed medical provider will determine if treatment's right for you. If prescribed, it ships free and discreetly to your door. Find affordable treatment options at up to 95% less than brand names at hims.com/joy. Find affordable treatment options at up to 95% less than brand names at hims.com/joy. That's hims.com/joy, H-I-M-S.com/j-O-Y.
It's state fair time again, and that means awesome new products at great prices. And Minnieleaf is getting in on the fun. Right now, Minnieleaf is offering a buy two, get one free on all products. So buy two sleep night gummies, get one free. Buy two triple diamond pain cream pods, get one free. You get the gist. Minnieleaf's products are of exceptional quality and 100% natural. Just go to minnieleaf.com to check out all of their products. The home of Minnesota's best legal products and also the sponsor of the Doobie Dabbler happening September 5th and 6th at Severs Festival Grounds in Shakopee. Thanks to our friends at Minnieleaf. Remember, buy two, get one free at minnieleaf.com.
Minnieleaf means quality. Taste happy at minnieleaf.com.
The home of Minnesota's best legal products.
Washburn McCreeve Funeral Chapels and Cremation Services has been providing compassionate and personalized service for over 160 years. Honor your loved one and ensure your own wishes are met. Call 612-377-2203 or visit washburnmccreeve.com.
Our voices, your voices on the voice of Minnesota. News Talk 830 WCCO and 1029 HD2 Minneapolis-St. Paul, always screaming on the radio. This is CBS News on the hour, sponsored by Progressive Insurance.
I'm Christopher Cruz. Where did summer go? The Labor Day travel rush has begun. If you're flying, you might spend less time in the security line. CBS's Nicole Valdez is at the airport in Nashville.
There are options for now, families and military members that can really bypass the wait for your standard traffic there through security. But even if you're going through standard TSA, the good news is you get to keep your shoes on now, which makes things move a lot faster.
And Spirit Airlines has just announced its file for Chapter 11 bankruptcy. Months after emerging from another bankruptcy, it will continue operations for the time being. A University of Miami football player is in custody and facing three counts of vehicular homicide. A Darius Hayes turned himself in after police in Largo, Florida filed the charges for an accident in May that killed three people. Here's Police Chief Mike Lux.
You have the death of three innocent people that were just driving, traveling on the roadways. So yes, they're very serious charges.
A judge said there will not be a decision today on a request for a temporary injunction by Federal Reserve Governor Lisa Cook to stop President Trump from firing her. And CBS's Natalie Brand says there is upheaval at another federal agency.
President Trump is also facing increasing pushback after firing CDC Director Susan Monarch, which triggered several other top officials at the agency to resign.
HHS Secretary Robert F. Kennedy Jr. sent an email to CDC employees after those resignations. Reporter Sabrina Cupid on what he wrote.
Secretary Kennedy wrote that the American people are ready to believe in this agency again if we showed them integrity, accountability and science guide every decision. He went on to say that he and Trump are aligned on a common sense vision for the CDC, strengthening public health infrastructure, investing in prevention and response, and returning the agency to its core mission of protecting Americans from communicable diseases.
The nation's largest pharmacy chain says it isn't going to offer COVID vaccinations in 16 states.
CBS cites the current regulatory environment. Pharmacists in those 16 states can't give shots that haven't been recommended by the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. That panel has yet to endorse this fall's COVID shots and is not scheduled to meet for another three weeks. Andy Pexos is a virologist at Johns Hopkins University.
COVID is happening right now, so we run the risk of delaying the rollout of the vaccine while we go through some of these regulatory hurdles.
Michael Wallace, CBS News.
Walgreens says it will offer the vaccine in states where it's able to. Saturday's Powerball jackpot now estimated at $1 billion. That's the sixth largest prize in the game's history. At the close of the trading on Wall Street today, Dow closed down about one quarter of 1%. This is CBS News.
Progressive Insurance with insurance for cars, home, boat, motorcycles, RVs and commercial vehicles at 1-800-PROGRESSIVE and progressive.com.
Minnesota's trusted voice every hour. Let's get you caught up with what's happening now on News Talk 830 WCCO.
Mostly cloudy, 77 degrees at 4:03. I'm Laura Oaks. We have learned this hour that Minnesota Governor Tim Walz may be preparing to call a special session on gun laws in the coming weeks. A senior administration official says Walz has been making calls to legislators and Walz says on social media today that it's time to take serious action at the state Capitol to address gun violence. Any bill would require bipartisan support in the Minnesota House, which is controlled by Democrats right now, but is expected to return to a tie after a special election in September to fill the seat of the late House Speaker Melissa Hortman. Minnesota DFL Senate Majority Leader Erin Murphy telling WCCO's Jason DeRusha, the evidence is clear.
When we had that at the federal level, gun violence did go down. And when it expired, gun violence did go up.
The move follows loud calls for a ban on assault style weapons after this week's mass shooting in which one of the guns used by the shooter was a rapid fire assault style weapon. Police say 120 rounds were fired into Annunciation Church, killing two kids, seriously injuring several others. Some legislative Republicans are calling this a partisan stunt. Meanwhile, Minneapolis city leaders today detailing a new emergency plan following this week's tragedy. WCCO's Taylor Rivera joins us live in the studio with the details. Taylor.
Hurts with the Minneapolis Police Department increasing patrols around schools and places of worship until at least September 5th. Assistant Chief Chris Gator says that officers who responded to the tragedy will receive mental health support and time off. And a state fund is also available to reimburse community members for mental health services, lost wages and other expenses. He also highlighted the community's resilience.
We've learned through this challenge that we are a very resilient community. We're a community of people who care about one another. And unfortunately, through these incidents, it tells us time and time again that Minneapolis will remain strong.
He also confirmed for the first time that MPD has made contact with the shooter's mother, but wouldn't provide more details due to the ongoing investigation.
Okay, Taylor, you mentioned in your report that people, now are you talking about residents can be reimbursed for mental health services or lost wages or anything having to do with this week's tragedy? What did they say about that?
Yeah, the city is announcing that these funds from a state program will be available to witnesses on the scene, parents of children, first responders, reporters even, who, who may feel that they need mental health services, they need to take time off, things like that.
And any word on how somebody can find out more information on that?
There is more information on the Minneapolis website, at the city's website.
Okay, thank you. WCCO's Taylor Rivera. Officials with HCMC meanwhile, say six patients are still hospitalized today. Five are children, four in satisfactory condition, one in critical. There's also one adult in serious condition. All are expected to survive. In other news, as the new school year gets underway, new results from the latest statewide comprehensive assessment tests show some flat results.
About half the students in the state are still falling below the benchmarks for reading and math. And while an achievement gap shows racial disparities persist, a Minnesota Star Tribune analysis shows black students posted a slight gain in math proficiency and children of migrant farm workers improved in both math and reading. Moving forward, education leaders are hopeful new standards that place an emphasis on phonics will help improve literacy. Student attendance figures were also slightly up in the latest round of data. Ari Bergeron, News Talk 830 WCCO.
And WCCO news time is 4:07.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with the check of the commute.
About to buy Treasure Island Resort and Casino if you're headed to the fairgrounds. Looks like the onsite parking is available, but it may be limited. But all the park and ride lots are currently full, so keep that in mind if you're headed to the fair. Also keep in mind that Selling Avenue is jammed up from Energy Park Drive up to Larpenter in both directions essentially you'll find it. So then Como Avenue South of the fairgrounds jammed up as well. East 36 got some slowdowns there. Cleveland Avenue over to Lexington, 94 westbound's jammed up as you make way through Maple Grove, past Henlock Lane to 610. And then again between Albertville and Monticello, expect some delays. Preparing for are prepared for mesmerizing evening of music when hailstorm, Lindsey Sterling and special guest Apocalyptica bring the Never Rest Uality Tour to the Treasure Island Amphitheater. Their electrifying hits like I Missed the Misery and Apocalyptic from Hailstorm and Crystallize and Roundtable rival from Lindsey Sterling on Friday, September 26th. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830 WCCO.
Hungry? Go to Dicky's Barbecue Pit of Eagan for real Texas barbecue. All meat smoked fresh, in-house daily. You can dine in, take out, have it delivered or have your event catered anywhere in the metro. Just go to dicky's.com. Dicky's Barbecue Pit of Eagan, the Twin Cities catering leader.
Now the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
Brought to you by Dicky's Barbecue Pit of Eagan, the Twin Cities catering leader. Find them at dicky's.com. Here's WCCO TV Chief Meteorologist Chris Schaefer.
A nice looking Labor Day weekend on tap, starting tomorrow around 61, warming up to about 79. That's average for this time of year. Should be partly cloudy, partly cloudy conditions continue Sunday and Monday with highs near 80. Enjoy the warmth. We have some rain coming Tuesday and a big cooldown that has highs in the mid 60s by next Wednesday.
Mostly cloudy right now, 77 at News Talk 830 WCCO.
News as it happens, the biggest stories are broken and broken down right here. News Talk 830 WCCO. Good questions, topics you'll probably talk about at dinner, places to go for dinner. This is the ride home reimagined. Welcome to Drive Time with DeRusha. Now here's Jason DeRusha.
All right, we are at the state fair. Hi, everybody. Nice crowd out here in the sunshine. The sun is out, the crowd is packed. We are packed here at the Minnesota State Fair. Nice looking crowd. We love to have you out here. We love to be out here. We are going to play Card D Sharks live, which I think is going to be super exciting. We've got two contestants for the crowd. I've got state fair trivia questions for you guys. So that, that is what our high-low questions will be. But we also have a special guest to do the poem live, our poet laureate of WCCO Radio's Card D Sharks. Let's play the game, hit the thing. The music, we can play the music? What are you thinking? Oh, it's playing. I can't hear, I can't hear up here. Cook's got to tell me it's playing. Say hello to Kristen, who's going to do the poem live. Everybody give it up for Kristen. All right, do it. Yeah.
It's been a rough week of that, there's no doubt. It's back to school soon, most parents will shout. So lift a voice of hope and say a small prayer. It's time for Card D Sharks at the Minnesota State Fair.
Oh.
On Card D Sharks.
Beautiful. Kristen, great job. Thank you. We love you. Thank you for sending the poem in every week. We have two great contestants over here. Let's say hello to Colton, everybody. Hi, Colton. How old are you? Hold that microphone right up to your mouth.
I'm 12.
12 years old. Where are you from?
Heartland, Wisconsin.
Heartland, Wisconsin. Fantastic. Where's Heartland?
Um, it's probably like 30 minutes away from Milwaukee.
Okay. I thought so. I used to, I went to Marquette University. I used to work in Milwaukee TV before this young man was born, for sure. It was that long ago. All right, Colton, glad to have you here. Why don't you hand the microphone over to your opponent? Christie is here. Hi, Christie.
Hello.
I'm not going to ask you how old you are.
Thank you.
Where are you from?
Shakopee.
Shakopee, outstanding. All right, good. Well, you guys know how we play. It's a high-low card game. I have some state fair trivia questions to ask you. Colton will get the first question. Christie will say higher or lower, and then whoever gets it right goes to the board. We're playing for $50 at a Jester Concepts Restaurant. So, uh, Colton, hopefully you have a relative here in the Twin Cities or you can maybe go out to eat tonight. Go to Parlor or PS Steak. I was at PS Steak last night and it was outstanding. So here we go. Colton, the first question is for you. Have you ever, have you ever been to the corn roast over there where they, they roast corn over an open fire?
No.
All right. Well, this might be tough for you. The question is this, what temperature is the corn roasted at between 0 and 1,000 degrees? What temperature do you think the corn at the corn roast at the fair? You could ask the crowd for help, but what do you think? What temperature do you think the corn is roasted at?
I don't know.
What do you think? Shout it out. 800 says somebody. What do you guys think? Corn roast temperature? Nobody seems to know, so throw out a number. What do you think?
Um, 750, 750 degrees.
750 says Colton. Christie, what do you think? Higher or lower? You've had the corn, right?
I have not.
You have not?
My husband has, but I have, I can't eat it.
Oh, well, that's a good reason then, yeah. Uh, I used to sleep on the corn at the corn roast. I'm like, I can make corn anywhere. And then I was bullied into finally having it. And in fact, I cannot make corn that's that good. It is so delicious. They get it from Untights Vegetable Farm, which a lot of people see those vegetable stands outside their grocery store. Colton said 750. Christie, higher or lower?
Lower.
Christie says lower. The actual temperature is 575. It is lower. And so Christie, you get to pick your card. You want the blue or the red?
I'll do blue.
All right, Christie does the blue. And if you're at home, you can log onto YouTube, click the live button on the WCCO radio feed and watch along, or you can watch on our WCCO Radio Facebook page. Christie's opening card is a two. Nice start for you. Higher or lower than a two?
Higher.
Higher than a two? Of course it is. It's a seven. It is higher. And now you got a challenge here. Seven's sort of a middle card. You can go for it, higher, lower, or you can freeze and that saves your progress and we'll go to another question. What do you want to do?
I'll freeze.
All right, we freeze on the seven. And Christie, this question goes to you. How many deep fryers are used to make the cheese curds at the mouth trap? So the mouth trap is in the food building. That's where they, I believe last year sold about a million dollars of cheese curds. How many deep fryers do they use to make those cheese curds? Between one and 100. What do you think, Christie? Think of those hot, oily.
65.
Cheese curds. Ooh, 65 says Christie. Colton, have you ever had? I mean, you're a Wisconsin kid. You've had, you've had fried cheese curds in your life, haven't you?
Yeah.
It's, where do they rank? French fries, tater tots or cheese curds? What's, what's your number one?
Cheese curd.
Cheese curds. That's, I mean, that, they'd kick you right out of Wisconsin if that wasn't your answer. All right, 65 was your answer. Do you think the actual answer is higher or lower?
Lower.
The crowd is yelling lower. You say lower. The actual number is 17. It is lower. And that's good news for you, Colton. You get your first chance on the cards. Are you ready? You get the red cards. Your opener is a four. It is a four. You want to go higher or lower than a four?
Higher.
Colton goes higher than a four. What do you think, crowd? Is it going to be higher? Higher than a four? It's a jack. It is higher. And that's a pretty good card. You can freeze at any time, but you're on a jack. What do you want to do? Higher, lower or freeze?
Lower.
All right, he's going for it. Lower than a jack? It is. It's a four. And Colton is cooking. Colton, if you make a misstep, you lose your progress, but, uh, four is a pretty sweet card. What do you want to do? Higher, lower than a four?
I'll freeze.
All right, he's going to freeze just for safety? And maybe he did that just so I could play a commercial. He's like, I know the bet. Jason's got to get two segments out of this. So we'll take a break. We'll be right back with Christie and Colton as they continue to play Cardy Sharks Live at the Minnesota State Fair.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRushia, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get together, be sure to meet at Andy's.
I want to take a picture.
Thielin Meats of Peers is where tradition meats taste.
Family grown, employee owned. We've mastered the art of meat.
That's why we're the number one meat market in Minnesota.
And we're located right here in Peers.
Check out our mouthwatering selection at thielinmeats.com.
Better yet, stop in and see for yourself. We're serving up love, one cut at a time.
Thielin Meats, from our family to your feast.
No meals complete without Thielin Meats.
Of Peers.
Grownups, aren't Sundays more fun without? Can I have screen time? Can I have a snack? I don't want to go to grandma's. It smells funny. And I'm bored. Bored is impossible on Kids' Day at Target Field. The gate thirty-four lawn is turned into Bullseye's backyard. Kids' meals are half off. Kids twelve and under can run the bases after the game, and grandma's invited too. Enjoy your weekend, wind up with Sunday Kids' Days, presented by Target. Join in at twins.com/tickets.
In construction, things don't always go according to plan. Delays, disputes, unpaid invoices, they can cost you big. That's where Helmut and Johnson comes in. Our construction law team focuses on contracts, litigation, lien claims, and more. Whether you're a contractor, developer, or supplier, we've got your back. Protect your project, protect your business. Helmut and Johnson, on your side, at your side. Visit hjlawfirm.com. That's hjlawfirm.com.
Imagine placing an investment or trade without fear. Knowing that big institutions have taken the same trade as you, pushing the price higher, which only they can do. You get to ride the wave of institutional demand. If not, your plan will protect you from the downside. This is how our students are taught to invest in trade. Right now, you can sign up for a free investing class where we'll outline our strategy for following the smart money. Text INVESTING to two one zero, two one zero. We'll also review strategies for growing a retirement portfolio, how professionals profit when stocks are falling, and how to protect your investments against inflation. With a twenty-five year history, local classrooms, and one-on-one support, you're not alone. And now it's your turn. Sign up for a free investing class today. Text INVESTING to two one zero, two one zero, or go to learnwithota.com.
Homes aren't one size fits all, so why should your home insurance be any different? Farmers Home Insurance packages offer coverage options you can tailor to fit you. Discover straightforward home coverage options and more by calling Farmers Agent Brad Sanford at six five one, six nine oh, twenty seventy-six. That's Brad Sanford at six five one, six nine oh, twenty seventy-six.
We are farmers.
Underwritten by Farmers Truck Fire Insurance Exchanges and Affiliates. Products not available in every state. You hear that? That's the sound of your business losing money. Legacy phone systems weren't built for today's teams. Open Phone gives your business a smarter way to stay connected. Open Phone lets you manage calls, texts, voicemail, and contacts all in one place so that you and your team can deliver a seamless customer experience from ring to. Need to take calls on the go? Open Phone automatically transcribes, summarizes, and highlights next steps from every call, so you never miss a detail. Need insight into what closes a sale? With Open Phone's AI call tags, you can instantly spot key topics like objections or pricing questions, and use those insights to coach your team and level up every customer interaction. And yes, you can bring your existing number with you for free. Keep your team in sync and your customers happy with Open Phone. Open Phone, no missed calls, no missed customers. Try Open Phone for free at openphone.com/try and get twenty percent off your first six months. That's openphone.com/try. Openphone.com/TRY.
You're listening to News Talk eight three oh, WCCO, live at the Minnesota State Fair, presented by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over forty-five years, and by the twenty twenty-six World Junior Hockey Championship.
Some noise for our friends from Lindis Construction hanging out right here outside our booth. Got a couple of great contestants. If you missed it live, make sure you rewind on the YouTube feed, live, the YouTube WCCO radio feed. You can see Kristen do the poem. She did it live on video. It was fantastic, uh, very timely right now. Two great contestants. We have, uh, Colton from Heartland, Wisconsin, and Christie from Shakopee, Minnesota. We allow Wisconsin people to come see the Superior State Fair. Have you been to the Wisconsin State Fair, Colton?
Yeah.
Right near, what is it? Oh, Wawatosa, right near Milwaukee? Oh, it's in Dallas. That's right, West Dallas, yeah. Which fair is better, Wisconsin or Minnesota? Now, here we go.
Wisconsin, but also Minnesota is way bigger and it has more things.
True.
To do.
That's good. This guy could be a politician, I think, a little bit, a little bit for both sides. That was very well done. What I, the only thing I love about the Wisconsin State Fair is the cream puff. Like, the cream puff thing is pretty good. If we have cream puffs here, not as good. Not as good as those Wisconsin ones. All right, here we go. This question goes to Colton. How many food concessions? How many food vendors are there at the state fair? Give me an answer between zero and a thousand. And you can give the answer in a hundreds. So zero, one hundred, two hundred, three hundred. How many food concessions here at the state fair? We're looking to the crowd. They're like, we don't know. One hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, says Colton. Christie, what do you think? Is the actual number higher or lower?
Higher.
Christie says higher. The actual number of food stands, despite the hype, you would think there was more, but there really are only three hundred food concession. So it is lower, which means, Colton, you are in pretty good shape here. You're on a four. Nothing to lose. You can change the four to a new card if you want, but a four is a pretty good card. What do you want to do? Higher, lower, or change the card?
Higher.
Higher than a four. Here we go. Dan Cook shuffled these, so don't blame me. It is, oh no, it's lower. It is lower. You made us, you made a smart move by freezing because you had lost all of that progress. That does mean that we get a free shot at the board, though, for, uh, our friend Christie. Are you ready? You, you're, you have nothing to lose. You're on a seven. Higher or lower than a seven?
Higher.
Higher than a seven? It is higher. It's a queen. And now you're in good shape here with this queen. Higher or lower?
Lower.
Lower than a queen? It is. Oh, no! It's an ace. What did, what did Cook do to you with this shuffling today? All right, I'm not saying the fix is in, but I'm curious. All right. We reload the board. And now we go to sudden death. Sudden death. So let's just focus on getting the question right, and then I'll tell you what the situation is. Christie, you get to go first. Answer between one and one hundred tons. How many tons of batter does the Pronto Pop operation at the Minnesota State Fair go through during every fair? So between one ton and one hundred tons, how many tons of batter does the Pronto Pop stand go through? What do you think, Christie? She's thinking. She's thinking.
Three.
Three tons of batter. Colton, higher or lower than three?
Lower.
Lower than three. The actual number of tons of batter that the Pronto Pop goes through is forty-five tons. Forty-five. It is higher. And Christie, that means you get to make a decision. You are on a seven. You can either change that card, which I assume you would do, and play it out yourself, or you can pass it, and Colton only has to flip two cards. Whoever makes a mistake loses, but if you get to the finish line, you win. Sudden death. So you get to decide, do you want to play or do you want to pass? And normally I would have a feeling as to what the right thing to do is. I don't know. This one is really tough. It's really tough. So you can get a new card. You can change the seven. And then you've got to run the table of those three. I know. What do you want to do? Play it or pass it? I know. Kristen is.
I'll play.
All right, Kristen's going to play.
I'll take a new card.
I was going to say, make up your mind. We're going to run into the Henry Lake Show here. All right, your seven becomes a queen. A queen, a nice card. And here we go. Christie, higher or lower than a queen?
Lower.
Lower than a queen? It is an eight. Oh, and now you've got a tough one, but if she calls it right, she get, she's still in the game. You call it wrong, Colton wins. Higher or lower than an eight? Flip that coin, right? Crowd, what do you think? Oh, they're mixed too. They're, they're no help, Christie. What do you want to do?
Higher.
All right, higher than an eight. It is? Oh, it's a three, and that means Colton has won the game. Let's hear it for our contestant, Christie. I admire the courage. Colton, if we had passed it to you, I always hate to do this because if Colton messes up, then Christie will be like, I should have passed. You would have gone on the four? Higher? You would have gone, oh, another four? Oh, boy. Yeah, you would have lost. What can you do? Christie, you're the best. Thank you for listening. Thank you for playing. Colton, congratulations. You win a fifty dollar gift card to Jester Concepts, and you better collect from mom and a friend that fifty bucks. Thank you, guys, so much. That was fun. Cardy Sharks is brought to you by Jester Concepts. We would love, if you go visit one of those stores, tell them you hear these gift cards being given away on CCO. They're Butcher and the Boar, P S Steak, Starling and Edina, uh, all of those parlors now. They've got a bunch of restaurants at Excelsior, too. We're going to break. When we come back, you know I love my Minnesota pork. We're going to talk. Huh? Oh, we've got a lot of stuff coming up. We've got a city council member. We've got a pork farmer. Lots more this la- this half hour here on CCO.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRushia, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get together, meet at Andy's.
All right, it's Jason here with a fall time message. A lot of people forget that the fall is actually the best time of year to do your landscaping. So many people think of landscaping after the winter because everything looks gross and you want to make your yard look great. This time of year is the perfect time to reach out to ProTurf. I had one of the ProTurf technicians at my house yesterday. They take care of my lawn. They are amazing. ProTurf takes care of lawn. They take care of sprinkler systems, but this time of year, they are really giving CCO radio listeners a great opportunity to plant new trees, plant new shrubs, plant new perennials, because the cooler soil temperature is just optimal for planting that new stuff. So I want you to reach out to my guys, ProTurf, they're locally owned. They're here in Minnesota since nineteen eighty-two. And if you do a four thousand dollar landscape project, so you could do a major landscape replanting, you could do hardscape, you could do a, you know, patio, you could do retaining wall. They're throwing in a free tree. Free six-foot Colorado screws for a two-inch sugar maple tree when you spend four thousand dollars or more. That's a six hundred fifty dollar value. So let's go. Nine five two, four six nine eight, six eight zero, or log on to professionalturf.com.
Wesley Financial Group is not a law firm, and Chuck McDowell, definitely not an attorney. This is Chuck. If someone talks you into buying something really silly, and you want to get out of that silly little thing, my advice, get the facts. Call me and I'll send you our timeshare exit kit absolutely free. Inside, you'll learn how timeshare works and all your options for cancellation.
Call Wesley now for your free timeshare exit information kit. Eight hundred three eight four, ninety-three ninety-three. That's eight hundred three eight four, ninety-three ninety-three.
The twenty twenty-six World Junior Hockey Championship is coming to Minnesota in December.
He scores! Team USA has got back to back.
This isn't just a tournament. It's where hockey history is written by the best young players in the world, right in front of your eyes.
The opportunity for it to be in the state of hockey, I think, we need to represent the United States how they should be.
Four USA games, one seat for all the action. Get your tickets now at worldjuniorsmn26.com.
Storm season is here. That means nature's fury will cause damage to your roof. When it does, that's when you call Brian Jobe of Job Brothers Construction. Because they're local, they offer same-day, twin-city-wide emergency service. Job Brothers Construction will repair or replace your roof from nature's wrath. They'll also work with your insurance company to ensure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Brian and his team truly take the hassle out of a terrible situation. Working with Brian and his crew will give you peace of mind because it was done right. Just contact Job Brothers Construction for a no obligation, free, and full inspection. Contact them online at jobbrothersconstruction.com. That's J O B E, Job Brothers Construction, handling all your roofing, siding, window, and gutter needs. They'll even repair your roof from fallen trees. Job Brothers Construction, they get the job done right.
Actual price will depend on product and subscription plan. Featured products are compounded drug products, which the FDA does not approve or verify for safety, effectiveness, or quality. Prescription products require an online consultation with a healthcare provider who will determine if appropriate. See website for details, restrictions, and important safety information.
Want to boost in and out of the bedroom? Hims has you covered. Introducing a new two-in-one approach to level up your game. Tadalfil for better bedroom performance and zinc for testosterone support. Put it all together, and you've got what you need to turn things all the way up. Getting started is simple. Just go to hims.com/joy to start your free online visit. Through Hims, you can access ED treatments, including pills, chews, and more, one hundred percent online. No office visits, no pharmacy lines. Just fill out a simple intake form, and a licensed medical provider will determine if treatment's right for you. If prescribed, it ships free and discreetly to your door. Find affordable treatment options at up to ninety-five percent less than brand names at hims.com/joy. That's hims.com/joy, H I M S dot com slash J O Y.
Let me tell you about this new Pretzel Cheddar Club.
Hey, I'm Carlos.
And I'm Ebony. And a little thing we love about the Chick-fil-A Pretzel Cheddar Club is the Tangy Dijon with the pretzel bun. It takes it to a whole nother level.
It goes perfectly with the chicken and the cheddar cheese and the bacon.
Man, you know how much you love bacon. And I love the different varieties, grilled, spicy, original. It gets you nice and excited for fall.
Order the Pretzel Cheddar Club with cherry berry and sprite for a limited time on the Chick-fil-A app. Real guests paid for their testimonials.
There's nothing like when you get that part from eBay and it just fits. Yeah, the first time. So you can do less of this and get right back to more of this. At eBay, you'll find all the parts you need, guaranteed to fit, at prices you'll love. Sounds good, doesn't it? eBay, things people love. Eligible items only. Exclusions apply.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Getting slow for Western ninety-four is move past Simlock Lane to six-ten, then again is midway between Albertville and Monticello. Having more up to the northwest, you'll find some slowdowns along that run. Eastbound three ninety-four jammed up, Worth Parkway into downtown Minneapolis. Thirty-five E seeing slowdowns both directions between I-62 and I-94. Jerry Peterson, News Talk eight three oh, WCCO.
One of the best state fair traditions is to meet at Andy's to find out what's new, or grab our number one favorite for the past four years, the caramel apple craft seltzer in a caramel-rimmed glass. And of course, Andy's Grill has everything Philly. You hungry yet? Meet at Andy's at the fair.
Now, the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
By Andy's Grill, let's check in with WCCO TV Chief Meteorologist Chris Schaefer.
It's the unofficial end of summer Labor Day weekend, and it's going to feel like summer. Highs in the upper seventies tomorrow with a partly cloudy sky. We should hit eighty Sunday and Monday with a mix of sun and clouds. Rain back in play next Tuesday, followed by a big cooldown. Highs only in the sixties Wednesday into next weekend.
The sun keeps kind of playing peek-a-boo with us here at the state fair. It was cloudy a second ago, now it's sunny. It's 76 on CCO.
Courtesy of Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship. We're live at the Minnesota State Fair on NewsTalk 830 WCCO.
All right, we're live at the state fair today, but we also are keeping a very close eye on developments after just the absolutely heartbreaking and infuriating mass shooting at Annunciation Catholic Church and School right in South Minneapolis. A total of two children killed, 18 injured, so 20, what, 20 direct victims to what happened, but so many more victims when you broaden it out to think about the family members, the people who are touched. I just can't stop thinking about that 10, the parents and the siblings of the 10 and the eight-year-old who were killed, and sitting in their house and having that room, those kids' room, right? Like, you just think about that as a parent. Eight-year-old Fletcher Merkel and 10-year-old Harper Moiski. The city council member for that part of Minneapolis is Linnea Palmasano. She's with us on the John Schuster Coldwell Banker hotline on what has been just a very, just an emotional, emotional several days for our community and for your community, Linnea. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me here.
Tell me, what is the number one thing that you want people to know about your community, about your part of Minneapolis, on how they've responded to all of this?
Sure. You know, I'd say if there's just one thing, it's that we are all wrapping our arms around those who are hurting in so many different ways. It goes beyond our city. Obviously, I've been getting contacts and communications in from across the nation and even internationally. I'm just coming from an event at Washburn Library, helping residents to cut ribbons and tie them around lamp posts and trees in the neighborhood around here. And that is happening at several locations all across the Twin Cities. And it's an enormous volunteer effort to find enough of this ribbon and to, we're basically cutting tablecloths into ribbons here.
Wow. Yeah, and all of those things matter. They matter so much, don't they? As much for the families of Annunciation to feel the love, but for all of us to feel like we can do something, right?
Right, exactly. We're praying with our feet. We're moving our feet to show, to show our love and care. I brought my own son and the neighbor's eight-year-old boy, and when they weren't counting out these cut pieces of tablecloth, they were making cards for the students as they go back to Annunciation. There's also that effort going on. And so while these things aren't taking permanent, making permanent changes, they are a way for us all to just visibly show our support and to, as we move around our community, to do so in remembrance of all of these students and the whole Annunciation community.
Oh, my gosh. Like, I would never, you know, you would never want to diminish the importance of those seemingly small steps, but they are, they're, it's everything at this point. It's what we can do. It's the way we can envelop those folks with love. And as you know, Linnea, and I think everybody listening knows, Minneapolis and St. Paul are big cities in the context of this state, but they are small towns. And all of us, I think, have, are probably no more than two, two steps of separation away from, you know, I have two friends, both are chefs in this community, who had kids in that, in that church when the shooting happened the other day. I mean, I'm sure the same is for you, being the city council member.
Yeah, you know, in my first contacts after the shooting, there were people at the county in the building who knew of parents who had children at that church in that moment. At the vigil a couple nights ago, park board employees were telling me who they knew from that school. Constituents are telling me that they were graduates. My own alma mater, alma mater sent a message to everybody in Minnesota from my school, talking about Annunciation and, you know, offering prayers for the grotto today. There are a couple of local restaurant owners, like restaurateur Ann Kim, that brought a lot of pizza to the memorial at Annunciation, and Broders providing meals to affected families. The, the local brewery here is, has a second day of an opportunity to donate blood. They have the mobile blood bank there. The connections just, they go everywhere. We're all here showing up in this horrible and heartbreaking moment together.
Linnea Palmasano is with us. I want to ask a little bit about policy stuff because the city of Minneapolis and the mayor, Jacob Fry, did ask the state for some state troopers, some law enforcement support, because so many kids are going back to school on Tuesday in Minneapolis. What, what's your thought? And the governor responded with, I think, 14 state troopers and another four DNR officers. That'll be visible for parents and students when they come back. What, what's your thought about that, that request and that response?
Well, you know, I, I was at the rescheduled curriculum night yesterday of curriculum night info sessions for our public schools that go back into session on Tuesday. And there were some, you know, anecdotal reservations from parents and people talking to us, just wanting to know what, what kind of security. I think our school district has done a good job of sending out additional information, like here are these terms, here's what they mean, and also just sending out mental and emotional support documents about how myself and others as parents can have meaningful conversations with our children about this, to be mindful of it, and also just to be able to move, move through their grief so that it's not something that's ignored, or put aside, or looks like it wasn't in our area because it wasn't in our school. You know, I think those are really important conversations to have. I have heard from a number of parents and just other community members asking for that. The past couple of days, we have had our police department making sure to keep guard, keep watch over Annunciation and the empty building that Annunciation is during this time, just because there are pieces of it that might be open to trespass and that sort of thing. We are working on, once Annunciation decides on a date to go back to school, what that safety plan might look like that would best respect where people are at emotionally in that school.
Linnea Palmasano is a city council member for Minneapolis, for the part of our city that's southwest corner of Minneapolis, the 13th Ward. You know, the mayor said yesterday that, you know, perhaps there's some way that Minneapolis can ban assault weapons. I think always in the immediate aftermath, we look for some sort of concrete policy change or solution. And I, I don't know, I never know what the right, what the right thing to do is, or what action would, would make change and make a difference. But what, you know, are there things that you think the city council or the city of Minneapolis could do?
Well, right now, we are preempted on almost every single type of gun control measure. So if
State law doesn't allow it, right, right.
State law does not allow it. And, and we cannot enforce anything that we would enact. We would have enacted a similar gun storage bill like St. Paul did, but we wouldn't be able to enforce it. So repealing the state preemption bill that would prevent cities in Minnesota, or even cities of the first class, that means the biggest cities in Minnesota, to allow us to do our own local gun control ordinances would be meaningful. At the legislature two years ago, I spoke passionately and adamantly, along with others, about our ability, could we, could we hold the ability to ban guns in public buildings, right? Meaning rec centers for our kids and places that we do city business, including City Hall. And, and I was quite surprised that had no legs on it at the time, even two years ago. So I do truly hope that this starts to change their mind. I have heard rumors that there are phone calls happening to legislators and that kind of conversation about whether or not to hold some kind of special session
Session, yeah.
Might make sense. So that would be, that would be terrific. I, I come from one particular point of view that is very anti-gun in general. I'm trying really hard to listen deeply to people who feel differently than I do on that right now.
Linnea Palmasano, before we go, I just want to give you a chance to say something about your Minneapolis police, where reports were that in the moments of the shooting, unlike in some other cities around the country, our officers who were not fully in, you know, normal kind of SWAT-type gear, ran towards the shooter. Just pretty incredible courage from, from Minneapolis police.
Right, yeah. Immediately, police, our MPD SWAT team, firefighters that literally lived nearby, EMS and the county sheriff's department, they all came on scene immediately. They all rushed to assist in every way possible. I was on scene probably an hour and a half after that for a few hours. And still, there's obviously a lot of people walking around in shock in that perimeter. And I, I saw a very compassionate response and a very, very competent response. We don't want to have to do first response to schools because of guns. So far, this response has been in a coordinated way. I don't think that response could have come faster or gone better.
Yeah.
And we're just trying our best to, to hold on to everybody in the community, and that means our law enforcement, too.
Linnea Palmasano, the city council member near the church, Annunciation Catholic Church in Minneapolis. Thanks, thanks, Linnea. We appreciate it. We're thinking of everybody in your, your neighborhood, for sure.
Thank you so much for bringing these sentiments in.
For sure. Thank you. We'll break. We're live at the state fair. Nice crowd gathered here to watch the show. We're going to talk to one of the Minnesota pig farmers who's out here. That's coming up next.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRusha, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the Great Minnesota Get Together, be sure to meet at Andy's.
All right, Jason here for Chris Lindahl and Chris Lindahl Real Estate. If you drove to the, you got it? Arms wide out. The arms are wide out. If you drove to the state fair or on a bus, you saw Lindahl. You saw Lindahl. And I asked Chris, I'm like, Chris, there are more Lindahl billboards up there than there normally are. I'm seeing you everywhere. I, you know, you're a good-looking guy, but enough already, enough. And he said, the reality is because of all of the uncertainty in the housing market, interest rates up and down, there are more and more people who are saying yes to a guaranteed cash offer. And I said, Chris, what, why? What's going on? He said, it's speed. People want to get on with their life, and they want to do it as fast as possible. The guaranteed cash offer is a guarantee, and it's a Chris Lindahl guarantee, because you can get to the finish line with Lindahl, sell the house, get your cash done in as fast as two days. Now, the beauty of that is like, life sometimes comes your way. You inherit a house, you want to move on. There's a family situation, a divorce, whatever. You want to move on. A fresh start on your life, fast. ChrisLindahl.com. Get a guaranteed cash offer.
Feel like everything's clouded by doubt? Visit CalifornianPsychics.com. Our psychics are available to talk 24/7, and we guarantee, if it's not life-changing, it's free. Experience the joy of certainty. Californian Psychics.
Snakes, zombies, public speaking, the list of fears is endless. But the real danger is in your hand when you're behind the wheel. Distracted driving is what's really scary and even deadly. Eyes forward. Don't drive distracted. Brought to you by NHTSA and the Ad Council.
Gain a global perspective and specialized skills that many of today's top employers are seeking. With an MBA from University of Maryland Global Campus, study online and complete your degree in just 16 months for about $21K. Choose from MBA specializations in global business, marketing, HR, finance, and more. No application fee if you apply by September 3rd. Learn more at umgc.edu. That's umgc.edu. Certified to operate in Virginia by CHEM.
Heading out for the weekend? Lucky you.
Don't forget to stop at Thielan Meats of Piers for some melt-in-your-mouth moments. Mm, mm.
High-quality beef.
Fresh and smoked sausages and brats.
Home-smoked bacon.
All-natural chicken.
A great selection of fish and seafood.
Visit us at thielanmeats.com.
We've got the cuts that'll make your meal.
Call to order ahead and pick up on your way to the lake.
You'll be the hit of the party.
Of Piers.
Jason here for Livia. Feel your best this summer with Minnesota and Wisconsin's number one most trusted weight loss program. Livia has been the gold standard for more than 15 years. GLP-1 medications, award-winning nutrition, or both, nobody gets better results. Right now, premium care is more affordable than ever. The meds, starting at $149 a month, and it's 50% off nutrition when you join now. You can lose up to 10 pounds or more in your first two weeks, but hurry. Livia.com or call 855-GO-LIVIA today.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Brought to you by Chef IQ Sense. Good to find things running fairly decent. South 35W, 494, heading down to Highway 13 as you head into Burnsville. West 94 slows, Hemlock Lane to Weaver Lake Road. And then again, out of Rogers, heading up into Monticello, get ready for some delays. I-35 northbound jammed up as midway through Hinckley right now, if you're heading north. Chef IQ Sense is a wireless cooking thermometer that perfectly cooks your food. The Chef IQ probe is inserted into your food and connects to the Chef IQ app to ensure you never under or overcook your food. It's that simple. Order now on chefiq.com with code word WCCO for 15% off. Jerry Peterson, NewsTalk 830 WCCO.
Jordan Green here. I pray you and your family are always safe. But if there's ever a time where you need an advocate after an accident, let Mike Bryant of Bradshaw &amp; Bryant help you. He will work with and for you in dealing with the insurance company. Call 800-770-7008 today. Bradshaw &amp; Bryant, seeking justice for the injured.
Now, the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
Bradshaw &amp; Bryant bringing us the weather. Chris Schaefer tells us tonight we get down to 61. Both tomorrow and Sunday, it's going to be 80. Beautiful, beautiful weekend, for sure. Right now at the fair, it is 77 degrees on CCO.
CCO State Fair coverage from the Great Minnesota Get Together is built by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and by the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
All right, it's not a Minnesota State Fair for me, unless we have Mike Patterson on, a great member of the Minnesota Pork Board, the pork producers. He's a farmer in Kenyon, and he's with us on the front porch. It's so good to see you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks for having us. It's, it's been great.
Mike is always giddy here at the state fair, because you, like, legitimately, maybe obsessively love the fair.
I love the fair. We've been, you know, when I was a kid, my mom and dad dropped me off with the pigs, of course, and I was here for the whole, the whole 12 days, probably a day earlier, probably here 13 days since our kids have been showing pigs. We're here, we're here every day of the fair, just about. There's, there's maybe a couple that we missed, but we come, and I just, I love the whole spectacle of it. I love the whole thing. You know, it's, it's just, it's just, I'm, I'm an extrovert, so I like people.
You, you were telling me, so your youngest daughter is here. She, what's her name?
Yeah, Lea.
Lea, and how old is Lea?
Lea's 11.
Lea's 11. Lea, you like the pig farm? She
Yeah, she loves it.
Brennan ear to ear.
Yeah, that's kind of her summer job, is, is she's training pigs and, and walking pigs and washing pigs and
Because you guys show, you do, you show some kind of competition pigs, I guess, right?
Right, yeah. Aside from the commercial hogs, which we, we raise commercial hogs as well, but we also do exhibition. And they're, they're a little bit different, but, you know, same concept.
Same idea.
You know, we've, we've gone to Louisville, Kentucky, Belton, Texas, Oklahoma, Indiana, Illinois. We've been all across the country showing pigs.
How fun. Like, what a great opportunity for the kids, right?
Yeah, that's absolutely. We've got some other show families that we really have gotten to, gotten close with. So it's kind of a, it's a nice, close-knit community of great, great people. So it's great people. We have good competition with the pigs, and sometimes you win, sometimes you don't, and you probably don't more often than you do, but
That's a good lesson, too, right?
That's a good lesson, too.
You got to learn to lose a little bit, for sure. Mike Patterson is with us. He's a pig farmer from Kenyon, Minnesota. So you were saying your daughter, also your 20-year-old, is doing like biological, biology, she's doing research, right?
Yeah, she's, yep, she's a junior at NDSU, and she's, she's going into biology and animal science minor. So she's thinking that maybe in vaccine development or something like that for animals. So she's, she's, she's really involved in the, in the pigs as well.
I just love for people to know that, because there's so much that goes into like today's generation of being a pig farmer. There's science, there's biology, there's vaccine, there's veterinary, there's all sorts of stuff going on.
Yeah, there's just, we've been talking about that a ton with, with the people out here at the fair, just how much science there is behind pig farming. It's, you know, we've got, we've got people that we work with from a nutrition standpoint, you know, what can we feed the pigs, a breeding and genetic standpoint, what can we, what can we utilize from a genetic standpoint to improve the quality of the meat, you know, because ultimately the consumer is our, is our person that we're most concerned about. We want
What do we want? What do consumers want right now when they're looking for?
I think they want to, you know, they want to, they want a product that's juicy, tender, and, and delicious and for their plate. And obviously bacon and ribs are really what, they, they really drive the bus in terms of pigs. We, we can't hardly make enough bacon and ribs.
Isn't that interesting? The ribs thing really picked up after COVID, didn't it?
Yeah, just everybody bought a smoker. Smokers everywhere. I see them all over the place. And, and, and I mean, I, I can understand it. They're delicious. And, and then a lot of people obsess about making ribs. This guy right here, he's got a great rib recipe, I bet. I guarantee it, you know?
Yeah.
3-2-1 or something like that, right?
It is, it is amazing how much people have gotten into it, which is, obviously, it's great. It's great for our Minnesota family farmer.
Right. I mean, anything that can
I'm a chop guy. I'm a chop. It's all, I like a bone-in chop or a tenderloin, I think is sort of the
I was just gnawing on a bone-in chop from the pork chop on a stick stand when I was coming in here. But I, I agree with you. It's
Your number one advice for people, because so many people tell me, like, when they make pork chops at home, they're dry.
Yep.
And
I remember, I remember, yeah, I remember Grandma's hockey pucks. Did you have Grandma's hockey puck pork chops as a kid? You know, you could gnaw on that thing like shoe leather for about, for about an hour.
You put some applesauce on there, so it tastes
The key, the key is 1:45 with a three-minute rest. So one, cook it to 1:45, three-minute rest, a little rosy in the middle. Don't worry about that. Pork is safe at, at that level. And you, you'll thank me later. Also, another thing is, in the pork promotion booth in the dairy building, Martin County Magic. Get yourself a little sample bottle of that. Use that Martin County Magic seasoning.
It's great seasoning.
It's the best. It's delicious.
All right, you can see our Minnesota pig farmers in the dairy building, but also the oink booth and the whole
In the swine barn, yep. The swine barn, the oink booth is right down in there. We've got a, we've got a sow with a litter of pigs, and there's some colorful ones in there, too, a little red. And then a, then a big boar. He's always fun to look at.
902 pounds, right?
That's a, that's a big boar. He's only two years old.
He's from Iowa, though. What, get out of here.
Well, okay, so
Who let these Iowa pigs at our fair?
He's a really good friend of mine, and he's, he's a phenomenal person. Bobby, I, I love him.
Teddy bear, right?
Teddy bear, yeah.
Teddy bear.
It's, nobody, nobody's keeping around a, a big boar for the competition. Maybe they need to pay a little more for the prize money, but
That might be it. It's pretty fun. It is That might be it. It's pretty fun. It is fun to go see. Mike, it's always great to see you.
Great. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming over. Go get some, it's the weekend. It's rip time, right? Thanks, Mike. Straight ahead, we've got D-Rush Hour news headlines, the lead coming your way. We'll talk about vaccines, lots of developments on the federal level. What does that mean for you and your family? We'll do it next.
At Tax Relief Advocates, we get it. Thinking about back taxes to the IRS can be very unsettling. Don't lose hope. With thousands of five-star Google reviews and an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau, TRA is resolving taxpayers' delinquent tax problems nationwide once and for all. We could significantly reduce and even eliminate what you owe the IRS. If you haven't filed your taxes in years or are already facing collections, we can help. We aren't just some run-of-the-mill tax service company. We specialize in helping individuals and businesses with $10, $50,000 or even $500,000 in back taxes get speedy resolution and in many cases only have to pay back a fraction of what they owe. The IRS isn't going anywhere and neither is your tax problem. To see what tax relief you qualify for, visit tracom or call 800-335-8578. 800-335-8578. Again, that's 800-335-8578. Tax Relief Advocates. Real solutions for real people.
We are Minnesota. We are NewsTalk 830 WCCO, 1029 HD2 Minneapolis-St. Paul, streaming live on the Free Odyssey app.
This is CBS News on the hour, sponsored by O'Reilly Auto Parts.
I'm Christopher Cruz. Millions of Americans are traveling this holiday weekend, some to Pittsburgh to see the Savannah Bananas. There have been some delays at Chicago O'Hare, but flyer Paul Dillon is dealing with it.
When you travel, you've got to accept the fact that what? There's going to be weather delays, you know, there's going to be all kinds of things that delay.
FlightAware says there have been more than 4,000 delays today into or out of the U.S. If you're planning to grill some meat this weekend, plan to pay more, says Detroit butcher Tom Betway.
Beef prices are higher than they've ever been and that has a lot to do with the tariffs and importing and exporting with the beef. Pork is stable, but your steak meat is much higher than, and ground beef, anything within the beef industry is a lot higher than usual.
Six of the people wounded in Wednesday's shooting at a Catholic church in Minneapolis are still at Hennepin Health Hospital. One adult, six children. One child remains in critical condition. CBS's Nicole Skanga has more on the investigation into the deadly shooting.
Investigators have actually spent several hours interviewing the shooter's mother, trying to make sense of this, trying to determine if she was aware of any significant warning signs before the shooting.
The Trump administration may send ICE agents into Chicago, says White House Deputy Chief of Staff Stephen Miller.
The president has been clear repeatedly that we're going to be prioritizing enforcement in these sanctuary jurisdictions as a matter of public safety and national security.
President Trump is refusing to spend almost $5 billion in foreign aid approved by Congress. CBS's Linda Kenyon has the story from the White House.
President Trump says he will not be spending the funds previously approved by Congress using a wear process known as a pocket precision. It sends the request to Congress toward the end of the fiscal year. And since lawmakers can't act on that request within a 45-day window, the funds go unspent anyway.
Hurricane Katrina struck Louisiana and Mississippi 20 years ago today. WWL radio reporter Dave Cohen is in New Orleans.
20 years after Katrina, there were reef laying ceremonies in coastal waters, at the levee breach sites, and at the Katrina Memorial where some of the 1,400 killed in the storm are laid to rest.
On the summer anniversary, we must remember and honor those who lost their lives. We offer praise and gratitude for all those who served our community during that time and for the rebirth and growth of our city.
Dr. Steve Nelson. This solemn ceremony was followed with a celebration of the city's survival and recovery.
Missouri's Republican governor said today he'll call a special legislative session to redraw the state's US House district in an effort to send more Republicans to Washington. Texas, Texas did the same thing. This is CBS News.
Think O'Reilly Auto Parts for all your car care needs. Get the parts and service you need fast from the professional parts people at O'Reilly Auto Parts.
Minnesota's trusted voice every hour. Let's get you caught up with what's happening now on News Talk 830 WCCO.
Mostly cloudy, 77 degrees at 5:03. I'm Laura Oaks. Minnesota Governor Tim Walz is reportedly making calls to lawmakers as he prepares to call a special session on gun control next month. WCCO radio political analyst Boyce Olson says it makes sense politically for Walz.
The governor's looking for new issues that can shift away from fraud and other things. And calling a special session would put Republicans on record on gun issues going into an election year. It may also give him a new platform that he didn't think about as he's been considering his new decision on whether or not he's going to run.
Republican legislative leaders call it a partisan stunt and say they haven't been consulted. Meanwhile, Minneapolis city leaders recapping their emergency response plan today in the wake of the mass shooting at Annunciation Church. Mayor Jacob Frye says the quick response was due in part to a simulated training that brought over 70 leaders to a FEMA facility in Maryland, preparing them for these types of situations.
What this is more about than specific changes is practice. And we practiced a whole lot. We practiced the coordination through our national incident management system. We practiced making sure that people understood exactly what their responsibility was regardless of the events that might occur.
City leaders also announcing today that anyone affected by the tragedy can apply for reimbursement for lost wages and medical bills through the Minnesota Crime Victims Program. The crowd of mourners outside Annunciation Church continues to grow.
Three days after the tragic shooting here, a powerful memorial for the two children who lost their lives and the injured has grown to cover the sidewalk and spill into the streets. The community is coming together here with one woman seen handing out bracelets with messages of hope while holding a sign that reads, "You Are Important." Community activist Robin Kattin.
Such a loss. I mean, where can you go that you're safe? You can't go to a theater. You can't go to a parade. You can't go to school. You can't go to mass. We've got to change our society.
Church officials are expected to provide an update this weekend regarding the restart of services and school here as the investigation continues. In South Minneapolis, I'm Taylor Rivera, News Talk 830 WCCO.
Amid the high tension this week, a teen is arrested at a Stillwater football game last night in possession of a BB gun. The suspect is a 17-year-old boy from White Bear Lake and not a student at Stillwater. Police say he fled on foot when initially approached by officers, but was eventually caught and taken to the Washington County Jail. And nearly a month after he went missing climbing a mountain in Wyoming, crews have found the body of a Lakeville man. 38-year-old Grant Gardner's body was found Tuesday by a professional climbing team in the Cloud Peak Wilderness. WCCO news time is 5:06.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Brought to you by Postman Law. If you're going to be traveling toward the state fair, Selling Avenue is jammed up both directions, basically between Larpenter and Energy Park Drive. Como Avenue is slow between Raymond and Selling. Some congestion along Larpenter as you approach Selling Avenue. All the parking lot lots around the fairgrounds are currently full. Traveling North 169, got your slowdowns there. 394 to Medicine Lake Road. West 94, possible crash just beyond Hemlock Lane off to the right. Keeping things slow through the area. Injured, call 844-POSTMAN. If you've been hurt in an accident, don't wait. Call 844-POSTMAN today. With over $3 billion recovered for their clients, they're here for you 24/7. Others promise Postman delivers. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830 WCCO.
Jason DeRosa here. The Canopy Group represents 16 different insurance companies, not just one. They give you options. Each year they'll review your program so you don't have to, making sure you get the best coverage at the best price. Do like I did. Go to thecanopygroup.com.
Now, the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
Brought to you by The Canopy Group. Here's WCCO TV Chief Meteorologist Chris Schaefer.
It's the unofficial end of summer Labor Day weekend and it's going to feel like summer. Highs in the upper 70s tomorrow with a partly cloudy sky. We should hit 80 Sunday and Monday with a mix of sun and clouds. Rain back in play next Tuesday, followed by a big cooldown. Highs only in the 60s Wednesday into next weekend.
Mostly cloudy right now, 77 at News Talk 830 WCCO.
When you call News Talk 830 WCCO, you're not just another voice, you're part of the conversation. Your tape, your platform. Come on, pick up the phone, take the mic, call in, speak out, be heard. Where Minnesota comes to talk. News Talk 830 WCCO. He knows muse. He knows talk. He knows nonsense too. So get ready for a lot of each. This is Drive Time with DeRosa. Once again, here's Jason DeRosa.
All right, it is Friday at the state fair. Glad to have you guys with us here at our WCCO radio booth. Nice, nice crowd here. One man clapping. Thank you, sir. God bless. Someone, someone.
It starts with one person and it was that guy.
That's right. It only takes one. It only takes one. And sometimes it only is one. That's how that goes, for sure.
More often than we'd prefer.
Yeah, that's fine. It's all right. It's great to be here. It's great to be with you on CCO Radio. This is our, it's our last day at the fair.
It is.
We will be working on Labor Day because I believe the best way to celebrate Labor Day is by working.
By laboring, yes.
Or you and I both forgot to take Labor Day off.
That could be part of it as well.
One of the two. It is one of the two.
That's okay.
It's fine. Good crowd here. Is it, has the fair been busy today or like normal?
Felt packed when I got here today, for sure.
Pretty packed. Yeah, so it's good. We had a couple of very slow attendance days. Wednesday was the lowest day of the fair, just about 111,000 people or something.
Yep.
And yesterday, didn't feel that jam packed.
125 yesterday.
125.
Yep.
But you know, the, the way this usually works is people are going to come to the fair. And so the weekend can be busy. So you know what I say? Please have fun on Saturday and Sunday. And I sure as heck am not coming out here on those days. That is for sure. It is 5:10. We have Twins baseball on the air here on CCO later today. Also, before we get the lead started, I do want to remind you to go to wccoradio.com/contests because we have a Black Keys contest. I love the Black Keys.
Black Keys are great.
I would love to see the Black Keys.
Do a great show, yeah.
They're live at the Armory next Saturday and we're giving away six pairs of tickets. And so all you have to do is go to wccoradio.com/contest and click on Black Keys and there you go. Let's do the lead. All right, our first story in the D-Rush Hour news headlines is the latest on the shooting at Annunciation Catholic School and Church. It has been making headlines all around the nation. This afternoon, we did learn a little bit more about what law enforcement agents have uncovered as they have been serving search warrants all over Minneapolis and the suburban area. They did find that the shooter in this case brought more rounds of ammunition than we initially knew about. The filing indicates 100 discard, discharged cartridge cases strewn on the ground all over the place, but the number of unfired rounds that were a part of it also were enormous. So more evidence about just how much worse this could have been if it wasn't for a quick response by law enforcement, which appeared to trigger the shooter to take his own life. I wanted to play what, what PJ Fleck said last night after the Gophers beat Buffalo. He started out his post-game news conference with really some emotions that all of us have been feeling.
We talked to our team about the tragedy. We said that we're playing for so many more people than just our locker room and our fans. We're playing to give hope to people for maybe a minute. That's what row the boat's all about. Row the boat is about putting your oar back in the water and rowing. And that's what this community in the state has always been about. And that's why I've fallen, fallen in love and Heather has fallen in love with this community in the state. And it's unthinkable to know what those families are going through. And I'm sure that this doesn't make anybody feel any better. But I truly hope that we brought a little glimpse of hope with our backs against the wall to our city where they could excel for a minute and smile with a Gopher football win. It is the smallest thing right now. Even in the locker room, I told our players, even our win, we're 1-0. Smallest thing we're thinking about right now. We're thinking about every single person involved in that tragedy, every family member, not just moms and dads, but grandmas and grandpas, aunts and uncles, friends, relatives, neighbors. It's unthinkable. And there's a lot that has to be done. Again, I'm not a politician, nor do I act as one. But there's a lot of things that need to happen and should happen. And we need to hold people accountable to make sure that happens. These are our kids.
PJ Fleck, he's a good man. He's a good man. I mean, that is exactly the right sentiment. And we've all felt sort of the crushing weight of what happened here in Minneapolis on a political side of this because the question of what next? What policy? What law? What are we going to do differently? The governor has been making calls to legislators. They have been talking about a potential special session on the issue of guns in September. Republicans have said, look, if the governor were really serious about this, we have a house that is evenly divided. The House of Minnesota has the exact same number of Republicans as Democrats. And to get anything passed, you would need at least one Republican. And so House leaders are saying, is this real or is this just politics? Obviously it takes two to tango. So you can make the political charge on both sides of this thing, but that's where we're at on this issue right now. Next up in the D-Rush Hour news headlines, the lead nationally, so much new information today when it comes to the federal government and what appears to be massive uncertainty as to what is going on at the federal level with vaccines. So much uncertainty. CVS saying you're going to need a prescription to get a vaccine, which would be a massive change to the way vaccines have been administered in the United States. To get some insight, we invite Dr. Mark Sala, the Assistant Professor of Medicine. He is a vaccine expert who joins us from the Northwestern University Feinberg School of Medicine. Dr. Sala, thanks for being with us.
Hey, my pleasure. And my, my heart goes out to you guys there right now, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. It is, it, it's a tough time. It's an uncertain time when it comes to, to our community, but also all around the country. I think people are wondering, okay, what, what is going on with the head of the CDC being fired when it comes to what some are calling an attack on vaccines? Do you feel that that is what's happening at the federal level?
Well, I mean, it's really hard to advise our patients right now, isn't it? You know, we'll see people in clinic just earlier this week and, you know, they're asking the question of, you know, what's coming this fall with vaccinations? And as early as Monday, couldn't really tell anyone anything. And then we get some news on new vaccine approval from the FDA and at the same time, sort of this new situation where can't really walk into a pharmacy and kind of get the vaccine you used to get last fall. So it's kind of a very mixed messaging and, you know, not the least bit difficult to really advise our patients on all of this right now. So yeah, some clarity and, you know, maybe more accessibility is something we really want.
Yeah, the idea that you would need a vaccine prescription is something that is just, you know, we've never, we've never had that before. And I think people are wondering, certainly you're in the Chicago area here in Minneapolis, I think as, as parents get ready to send kids back to school. Is that, I mean, is, is that what you could see as being a new reality that in general, you might need a prescription to get the vaccines you need?
Well, it's particularly troubling because, you know, so if you go to your doctor for maybe your pulmonology clinic or whatnot, and you maybe need a pneumonia shot, I mean, that's, you know, we can give that in clinic here. But remember, with these COVID shots, I mean, since the beginning of the pandemic, you've gotten them from your local pharmacy. That's how the distribution was working. And so for that to sort of be turned on its head for this fall is quite abrupt. And so, so take me, for example, a healthcare professional exposed to COVID all the time. You know, I'm under age 65. And so now I'm in a circumstance where I'm going to go to a pharmacy with a written prescription for a vaccine that I would have just walked in for before. And, you know, and not the least of which is you take kids and everything else. Yeah, it's a change in practice and it's going to cause a lot of confusion. So we have to be able to kind of tell our patients that this is going to be very different this year. And, you know, that's hoping that they're, you know, kind of able to get to us and kind of ask anyway if they're kind of aware of the situation.
Dr. Mark Sala is with us here on CCO. So, you know, obviously there are a lot of people that part of the reason they've- of people that part of the reason they voted for Donald Trump for president was that they liked the RFK Junior message, the, the Secretary of Health and Human Services. He has been for years skeptical of vaccines, distrustful of public health agencies, especially during the COVID pandemic. But I don't know how many people would have thought like, all right, that this skepticism over the COVID vaccine is going to extend to all vaccines. I think that that is, that is, uh, well, it's just the uncertainty, I think, is where a lot of people end up here.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the, I think there is a lot said, um, at the time of, you know, the, uh, you know, during the nomination, uh, about promises given. And, you know, I think that, um, I, I'm not sure that it should be too surprising that this is the road that would eventually be taken on vaccines, um, knowing kind of the situation and kind of historically what, uh, he's been for or against. Um, I think at the end of the day, you really just have to go with the data. Um, and that's just how you divide all these different opinions. So the vaccines do exactly what they're supposed to. And if you see an uptick in pediatric hospitalizations and ER visits this fall, um, you know, for, um, respiratory viruses, I mean, this is sort of what you get. So, um, you know, I think we just always just have to go with the numbers to sort of make sure we can, you know, split the difference on people's different opinions on things. And that's really how you just have to settle with reality here.
Doctor, I gotta be honest, I'm worried. Like, I'm worried that people were so politically divided. There was a time where you looked at, uh, the CDC and you looked at the medical community and said, well, we're, these are scientists. Like, this isn't the Republican science or the Democratic science. This is just science. So it makes me nervous where we're going.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's certainly kind of our part-time job now to sort of defend, um, science and biomedical, you know, um, uh, you know, research and such. And that's not, I'm sure where people thought we would be. Um, but, uh, you know, unfortunately that has become our side job at this point for, you know, outreach and medical education and, you know, making, making sure the community is getting the information they need. And, you know, to be honest with you, this extends far beyond the simple vaccine, uh, question, which is complicated as it is. But I mean, mRNA was making trajectory toward anti-cancer therapies too. So you gotta keep in mind that this has more reach than what you're thinking.
Yeah, that's right. That mRNA is what's really under attack, which has been really, in my view, and I'm no scientist, but it's that, that sort of, uh, technology to be able to try to fight cancer was one, was and is one of the most promising medical interventions in history. If it played out the way, uh, it likely will, you know?
Yeah, again, I mean, you've, uh, you've got to eventually just, uh, drown out the sound of different opinions and just go with the data and the medical literature. And I think that, um, that's how you kind of find the truth with this.
We appreciate your insight, Dr. Mark Sala, pulmonologist, uh, vaccine expert at Northwestern Medicine in Chicago. Thanks, Doc. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Be well.
5:21. That's the D-Rush Hour news headlines. Uh, the lead coming up next, page two, and lots of good stuff for you coming up next, including, uh, questions about sharring your hot dogs? Could that be bad for your health? Maybe. Also, remember when all those billionaires or a hundred or so billionaires who promised to give away half of their money? Did they do it? We'll take a look at that when we come back.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRusha, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the Great Minnesota Get Together, meet at Andy's.
Want you to reach out this weekend to Tareen Dermatology. It's Jason here for my dermatologist. Uh, I visit Dr. Mohiba Tareen right in Roseville, not too far from the state fairgrounds here. She has, uh, really built something special. And her goal is always to make sure if you have a need to see a dermatologist, so you got, you know, maybe you have eczema or maybe you have a rash that you're worried about, or maybe you have a mark on your skin that changed shape or size or color. She wants you to be able to get an appointment within three weeks. And so they just save the room on the books. Some dermatologists, before I met Dr. Mohiba Tareen, I remember calling to get an appointment for Seth with the dermatologist. And I was told it would take five months, five months in Maple Grove. That's just the reality of trying to get dermatology, dermatological care. And also, if you try to say dermatological care, that may take you five months to get that right as well. Tareen Dermatology has nine locations, 25 board certified providers. I go to Roseville, you go to Faribault, you go to Maplewood. How about Hudson, Wisconsin, Eagan, Lakeville, brand new in Lakeville? Make that appointment. You can book the appointment online. It's five o'clock. You could do it tomorrow, whatever. Go to Tareen, T-A-R-E-E-N, TareenDermatology.com.
Hi, I'm Chuck McDowell, the timeshare cancellation guy. In 2011, I founded Wesley Financial Group with one goal in mind, to help honest folks out of their timeshares permanently. Today, I run Wesley with my two sons, a real family business, treating every client and every employee like we'd want our own family treated. That philosophy has helped us grow into the largest, most trusted timeshare cancellation company in the United States. Fortune Magazine even recognized us as one of the best places to work. Why? Because we genuinely care. In fact, some of our former clients were so moved by their experience working with us, they joined our team so they could help others to timeshare freedom. If you're stuck in a timeshare, give us a call. Let our family help your family.
Call Wesley now for your free timeshare exit kit. 800-885-9700. 800-885-9700. That's 800-885-9700.
When people think sleep apnea, they think CPAP. Now at Advent, we do all we can to help sleep apnea sufferers avoid the CPAP machine. And most sleep apnea sufferers who come to Advent are going to be able to avoid a CPAP altogether. Our unique Advent approach using simple in-office solutions can get your nose working and throat open all under one roof. You see, the root of every snoring and obstructive sleep apnea problem lies within the throat, nose, or both. At Advent, we know when we get the nose and throat working properly, most snoring and sleep apnea problems will subside. And we have the most simple and convenient, ultra-effective in-office solutions that can do just that. And this is why people have traveled by planes, trains, and automobiles from corners of the world you would never think of to find the sleep apnea and snoring relief you won't find elsewhere.
Go to adventnose.com to schedule your appointment because Advent knows when you breathe well, you live better. Most insurance accepted.
Actual price will depend on product and subscription plan. Featured products are compounded drug products, which the FDA does not approve or verify for safety effectiveness or quality. Prescription products require an online consultation with a healthcare provider who will determine if appropriate. See website for details, restrictions, and important safety information.
Want to boost in and out of the bedroom? Hims has you covered. Introducing a new two-in-one approach to level up your game. Tadalfil for better bedroom performance and zinc for testosterone support. Put it all together and you've got what you need to turn things all the way up. Getting started is simple. Just go to hims.com/joy to start your free online visit. Through Hims, you can access ED treatments including pills, chews, and more. 100% online. No office visits, no pharmacy lines. Just fill out a simple intake form and a licensed medical provider will determine if treatment's right for you. If prescribed, it ships free and discreetly to your door. Find affordable treatment options at up to 95% less than brand names at hims.com/joy. That's hims.com/joy, H-I-M-S.com/j-o-y.
Chad back here with you. I want to talk about trust and peace of mind. We all need it, in particular in some areas, including your insurance. Maybe it's for your business. Or maybe it's more traditional with your house and your car. For me, I have trusted Amber Scholl and Associates with American Family for what, guess, five years, 10 years? No. My entire family, whether it's my father or my kids, with American Family, with Amber in particular, for 30 years. We dread something bad happening with our house, with a car accident, but we need people with expertise, with professionalism, and availability. And that's what Amber and her team are all about. Reach out to them today. It's worth it. Trust me.
Live from the Minnesota State Fair, News Talk 830, WCCO's broadcasts are built by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and by the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
All right, somebody just walked by with their poodle. Another singer just absolutely slayed a Cranberries song across the way. It's the State Fair on a Friday night. It feels good. It feels good. D-Rush Hour news headlines continues with page two. And this weekend, as you think about firing up the grill, could your extra charred hot dog be causing cancer? All right, The Washington Post, I have had so many people over the years ask me about this. Cause maybe you like a hot dog charred or a brat, or you like something really blackened. Washington Post reporting that, uh, moderation is the key. Moderation is the key. So they say, and look, the reality is, most of the, there is not a lot of evidence on this thing. There are circumstances where if you cook certain meats and you burn it, it can be carcinogenic. So The Washington Post saying, look, they've never found a consistent association between eating blackened or charred meats and developing cancer. Uh, part of the challenge here is that the chemicals that created from that sort of charring, when they test it with animals, they give it at like a thousand to a million times higher than what we get. So they say, look, the risk is low, but it's probably not zero. So decide what you want. You know what? Anything can cause cancer. And I, I am not worried about burning the hot dog. I'll tell you that much. 57 billionaires pledged that they were going to give away half of their wealth. Did they? No. What do you think? What do you think the answer is? The answer is no. They did not. USA Today with a really interesting story about this. Uh, Bill and Melinda Gates launched this pledge along with Warren Buffett. The idea in 2010 was to get the ultra wealthy to divert some of their riches to charity. USA Today reporting that there's a new study on this called the Giving Pledge at 15 because it marks its 15th anniversary in August. So here's what happened. Bill Gates gave away $55 billion. Warren Buffett gave away $51 million. Michael Bloomberg, $20 billion. Billion. Zuckerberg and his wife, $10 billion. George Lucas, Dan Scott, Captain Star Wars, and his wife, Melody Hobson, gave away $4 billion. But even though they gave away a lot of money, they didn't give away that much. The 32 living billionaires who signed the pledge in 2010 have given 18% of their wealth. Pretty good. I'm not complaining about giving away 18% of your wealth. But if they're going to take credit for giving away half, you kind of got to give away half. And one more story about fake Labubus. Can you believe it? I, did anyone believe that the Labubus being sold at the grandstand at the State Fair? Did anyone think that these were real? Yeah. The Labubu. They're kind of ugly, cute collectibles in these blind boxes. You open the box, see what you get. Uh, at the fair, they're fake. Labubus are usually 30 bucks. The ones at the fair are 20. Chinese Customs Authorities are seeking fake Labubus almost daily. In June, they confiscated more than 200,000. Nobody thought they were real, did they? I don't think.
Fake, 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 fake.
Exactly, exactly right. Exactly right. That's the D-Rush Hour news headlines. Dan Hayes is going to join us in just a minute. We talk every Friday about the Minnesota Twins. And we got to meet a couple of twins out here at the State Fair. We'll tell you what they ate when we saw them in just a minute. Drive Time back, live at the fair on a Friday.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRusha, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the Great Minnesota Get Together, be sure to meet at Andy's.
And indeed, we want you to meet us at Andy's. If you're coming to the fair over the next couple of days, it is a family business, four generations, four generations of Andy's Grill. And the people there are just unbelievably awesome. You're gonna love the Andrus family. They've got brand new beverages this year, pineapple upside down cake slushy. I think that is delicious. They use two, uh, like cherry popsicles as the garnish. That's pretty fun. They got the hurricane, which is kind of, it, it's, at the State Fair, you're not allowed to make drinks with fully loaded booze, but this tastes like, yeah, I know, just the beer, just the beer. This tastes sort of like a, like a rum passion fruit cocktail. Pretty cool. And then Orange Bliss. This is orange, some vanilla, some marmalade notes. It's really cool beer from Prize Brewing, uh, that you can check out as well. Andy's has great food, too. They're famous for their Philly cheesesteak, and you can get the Big Andy. That has got, uh, cheesesteak meat on top of a burger. Why not? It's so much fun. Great family, too. Say hi to them. Tell them you heard it on CCO. Meet me at Andy's Grill.
612 Saturdays are back at Target Field. Enjoy six buck drinks, dollar snacks, and $2 food when gates open.
I'm from the 952. Can I enjoy 612 Saturdays?
The 952 is welcome.
I'm from the 218.
218, 651. Everyone is welcome at 612 Saturdays.
I'm from the 313. How about me?
That's Detroit.
Yeah, sure.
Enjoy the weekend windup with 612 Saturdays presented by Car Bliss. Six buck drinks, dollar snacks, and $2 food. When we're together, the Twins rise as one. Join in at twins.com/tickets.
You ever try fixing your car and realize you're missing that one part? Yeah, been there. That's why eBay is my go-to. They've got millions of parts guaranteed to fit. I'm talking brake pads for when yours have seen one too many miles of stop and go. Oil filters because you don't mess around with your engine care. Even got this cold air intake on my watch list, I might just go for it to keep the ride cool and your DIY streak hot. Find all the parts you need at prices you love, guaranteed to fit every time. eBay, things, people, love. Eligible items only. Exclusions apply.
Millions of Americans take medicine like Ozempic and Zepbound. Many of them are overpaying by thousands of dollars a year. These GLP-1 medications for diabetes, weight loss, and more may not always be covered by your insurance, but GoodRx can help. GoodRx helps you save every month on prescriptions at over 70,000 pharmacies nationwide. Best of all, it's free to use. Check GoodRx to save on GLP-1s. Just go to goodrx.com/GLP. That's goodrx.com/GLP. GoodRx is not insurance, but can be used instead of insurance, including Medicare and other federal and state funded programs.
Online security is a must, and millions are choosing NordVPN to stay safer and more private online. And you can do that, too. Get NordVPN with 77% off and up to three months extra. NordVPN will encrypt your online traffic from data snoopers and internet service providers, while NordVPN's Threat Protection Pro will reduce risk of phishing and alert you about the fake online shops and known scams. And that's not all. If your email address is leaked to the dark web, you will get an instant notification from the dark web monitor and act accordingly. Get the special NordVPN deal today at nordvpn.com. This offer includes a 77% discount on a two-year plan and up to three extra months. Savings and additional terms apply and can be found on nordvpn.com. The offer is valid until October 15.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Brought to you by American Rare Coin and Collectibles. Find them at americanrarecoinandcollectibles.com. Going to find things running pretty decent for the most part across the entire system. Sun slowing east 394, 100 into downtown Minneapolis, 1.69. Some slowing around Madison Lake Road. If you're up on the north side, you'll find Highway 10 running smoothly 35W into Anoka. If you've inherited valuable coins, gold, silver, or jewelry, where do you turn? American Rare Coin and Collectibles. For over 30 years, American Rare Coin has been purchasing valuable coin and precious metal collections with honesty, transparency, and immediate payment. AmericanRareCoinAndCollectibles.com. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830, WCCO.
If you have trees to trim or need tree removal, call an ISA certified arborist. Call the CCO land company I use, B&amp;M Tree Service, 1-800-569-9034, or get on the web, B&amp;MTree.com.
Now, the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
Brought to you by B&amp;M Tree Service. Here is Chris Shaper.
It's the unofficial end of summer Labor Day weekend, and it's going to feel like summer. Highs in the upper 70s tomorrow with a partly cloudy sky. We should hit 80 Sunday and Monday with a mix of sun and clouds. Rain back in play next Tuesday, followed by a big cooldown. Highs only in the 60s Wednesday into next weekend.
Right now at the State Fair, the sun is out again. The sun tucks behind some clouds and then comes at you. It's 75, but probably feels like 80 on CCO.
You're listening to News Talk 830. You're listening to News Talk 830 WCCO, live at the Minnesota State Fair, presented by Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and by the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship.
That is the Dan Hayes entrance music. Dan Hayes is with us. Oh, the crowd is going nuts for it. Dan, you've got, your fan club is out here at the state fair. They're sad. They thought this was going to be the first time Dan was going to come to the fair.
Uh, yeah. I can tell there's at least one or two people you paid.
There's literally one.
Maybe a dollar.
Yeah, there are two people. There are two people. And you know how cheap I am. I didn't pay him anything. Like, come on, let's be realistic.
That's, that's fair.
Uh, Dan is with us tonight. The Twins are at home. They're taking on the Padres. And we have had a chance over the last couple of days to see what it looks like when your team is completely out of sorts, right? Like this is, this is sort of what the Twins are right now.
It is. I mean, look, there's some really good signs. There's some stuff that's been fun. Um, basically innings one through six are great, but then when you run out of pitching, you know, you're susceptible to a game like Wednesday night where you blow a three run lead late and lose. And, and it's not fun to be there at the end. But I mean, honestly, that's what the Twins signed up for when you traded away five guys. They knew it. And as much as they're not going to say it, um, those are the perfect kind of losses because they saw a lot of good signs out of Byron Buxton, Luke Kishel, Austin Martin. And then they lost. And that's great for their pick for next year. Cause they're going to end up probably with the top five pick. And they will not be upset to be picking up there in the, in the draft.
So I 1,000% agreed with your take that that was a good loss by the Minnesota Twins. I mean, the reality is, and look, I don't, nobody wants an intentional tank. I think as a fan watching your team tank sucks. And, and like, I don't need us to be winning an eight, seven game over the Blue Jays. Like, I don't see how that helps the Twins at all in a situation where, where it's over. We're trying to see guys develop and try new things. The, the actual result of the game doesn't matter.
And it's easy for you and I to say, because we're not paying for season tickets. And I feel for those people.
Yep.
Um, but you know, and then that's something to always consider. But for long-term health of the franchise, losing is better right now. And seeing development. So I mean, that's what you kind of have to look at, at this point of season, the big picture versus day-to-day results. Because they made sure day-to-day results are not important when they traded, you know, 10 players off the major league roster.
So we got to see out here at the fair yesterday, uh, Luke Kishel and Cody Clemens. And they, they had their first, uh, their first time out here at the state fair, which was pretty fun. Uh, these guys are pretty interesting and charismatic.
Like you have all of the legends.
Like it was, they, they got their first chance to like eat state fair food. So they had fresh french fries and Sweet Martha's cookies and the cheese curds. And it was interesting, like Kishel really could, could develop into a face of the franchise, don't you think?
Absolutely. He has the, the potential. Um, it's about how he plays and the way he plays is infectious. And I think guys really pick up on that. He plays hard. Um, he wants to win, but I mean, he shows it a lot more than other guys. Um, and it's not fake. It's certainly something that's within him, that fire. And you know, as much as he knows he's sort of a leader, he, he handles it really well. He just, he doesn't try to make himself too big of a, of a thing. I think he wants to be a guy that people gravitate towards, but he recognizes, you know, the importance of his teammates and doesn't want to make it about him. And I think that's a really effective way to lead. And I think that it's why guys are drawn to him.
His results have been amazing, right? His average is what, 337 right now? Four, four home runs? I mean, he's just been on fire since, since he came back from the injury.
He has, and you can understand why the Twins are excited. I don't know that he's going to be a 337 hitter. That would be pretty amazing. But if you can get a 290 guy that gets on base about, you know, 40% of the time and hits for a little power and runs the way he does, um, that's a very good table setter. And he seems to not be afraid in big situations, clutch, you know? Him and Byron Buxton towards the top of the lineup, um, for some run producers could be a very, uh, fun thing. And then you throw in, you mentioned Cody Clemens and I, it's hard to find guys that come up with, you know, off the scrap heap, because he was traded for cash considerations, that take advantage of a situation more than he has.
Yeah.
He's put themselves in their plans going forward. And I don't know that, you know, they're going to be better off if, if it's a guy that is sort of a bench guy. Um, but he certainly, his baseball acumen is high. He hits some big home runs this year. Um, an easy guy to root for.
Dan, speaking of moving forward, I have a theory. I have an idea. I want to share this with you. I want to let you pour cold water all over it and then we'll see where we're at. But we've heard the term now soft rebuild. Yes, the Twins traded 10 guys off of their major league roster. There's still plenty of talent on this roster. The bullpen's obviously a mess, but it doesn't take that much money to restock a bullpen to a degree. This is a division that's eminently winnable going forward. Does a team really have to put it in the ditch for two years? Or can this team be kind of bounce back pretty quickly and be back to being competitive? If some of these young players all kind of come together and develop how they should?
Yeah, I think that's the key right there. I think, you know, when you look at your starting rotation, Pablo Lopez, who is probably one more start away rehab wise, um, and Joe Ryan are, are leading you going forward and you have Bailey Ober. So you have like the foundation of a good rotation in place. What you need is one of Mick Abel, or two of, sorry, uh, Mick Abel, Taj Bradley, Zebby Matthews, um, David Festa, Simeon Woods Richardson. Out of that five, you need two to threes to really step forward and show that they are viable starting pitchers. And I, I think when you have that much of a group going in place that will have that much major league experience, you're not looking at a bad rotation. And you know, obviously it depends on what they do this off-season with Joe Ryan and Pablo Lopez, and whether or not they trade them. I don't think they will. I, I think that, you know, it's not easy to sell the fans if you continue building, like taking this roster apart. And I think they look at their pitching as a strength. Um, so if your rotation is that sound, it doesn't take a lot to be competitive. The, the Guardians, you know, they've done this for years with very little offense. Um, the Twins aren't all that far off with that starting pitching. That said, you do need to build a bullpen again from, from scratch. Um, and there's some intriguing parts in there, you know, with, uh, with Sands and Cody Funderburke, who's been outstanding since the trade deadline, stepping up into a new role. Um, you know, Justin Top has been pretty effective and he's going to be around for a little longer. You, but you obviously need a couple more guys. You know, it wouldn't shock me if this was a team that's capable of 80 wins right now, next year. And that's weird to say that, but you get, you're going to have to add in some bullpen. And there's, there's enough pieces there between the position side and, and, uh, and the starting rotation. That's not far off the, not far fetched to see them being, you know, close to a 500 club. And if things really come together, maybe a little better. Um, but it's just going to depend how they spend and what they decide to do with Pablo and Joe.
Dan Hayes is with us from The Athletic. Your colleague at The Athletic, uh, Aaron Gleeman wrote about Walker Jenkins. Top prospect for the Twins. Now just, uh, well, Aaron says, because he just got promoted to the St. Paul Saints, a triple A club, that, you know, he's 20 and in a heartbeat away from being in the big leagues. What, what do we think? Or what do the Twins think about Walker Jenkins?
Keep him on the field and, you know, it won't take long. That's what I think they think. Look, the last step for him really is to tap into his power and, and develop that power a little bit more. Um, you know, make sure that he is on time on the off speed and they can hit off speed. But he is a, he's been a polished guy since the minute they drafted him. And Ryan Jeffers works out with him in the off-season. They're both from, uh, Carolina and, you know, has seen him and the way he works in the off-season and said that at 19, that Walker Jenkins had more of a kind of daily, you know, idea of what he wanted to do, of a plan, a routine than most guys do at 25, 26, 27. And he was kind of intimidated by that. He said it was so impressive to see how polished he was. And it's shown on the field when he's been there. That's the thing. He is not, you know, we've seen it last year, he had a hamstring, ankle injury earlier this year. Some things have kept him off the field, but he's been in a nice little run here and staying on the field the last couple of months since he got, since his season started two and a half months late. And he looks really good. And that's why he is on this accelerated timeline. They have big, big hopes for him. And you can understand, because if you have Walker Jenkins and Luke Kishel with Byron Buxton, you know, end of career Byron Buxton, there's a lot to like about where this team can go very soon. Um, so it would not shock me to see him not on opening day. I, that's not going to happen. I just don't think that's realistic. But next year, in the middle of the season, he could very well be in the, in the majors.
All right, Dan, before I let you go, I know, and you sent me some pictures of Oasis. Did they, did they play Wonderwall? Did you get to hear Wonderwall? Play a little Wonderwall for us, Tubbsy. Here's, I mean.
Yeah, it was amazing. Like.
Soldier Field, amazing show, huh?
Yeah, and we somehow got lucked into some wristbands and were 20 feet of stage right the whole show. It was, it was definitely worth it. I had high hopes and it crushed those. So they played everything. They played, you know, Live Forever. They played Fight Away. I was, I was a happy guy.
I am very jealous, insanely jealous. I had a bunch of friends at the show in Toronto. So for you to see it at Soldier Field, so cool. Dan, thank you so much. Have a great long weekend. We'll talk to you next week.
All right, guys, thanks.
Dan Hayes with us every week on CCO. Back in just a minute here at the fair.
You're listening to Drive Time with DeRushia, live at the fair, presented by Andy's Grill. Hey, if you're heading out to the great Minnesota get together, meet at Andy's.
Hey, it's Jason DeRushia back here at the state fair with a fall time reminder. This weekend is sort of the unofficial beginning of the fall season, right? It's just reality. I know I'm a, I'm a big meteorological, uh, calendar guy. So meteorological fall starts soon. The bottom line, when it comes to your yard and your landscape is now is the perfect time to plant new trees, to spend some money on making your home an oasis. ProTurf took care of us here at our state fair booth. You see all of these beautiful shrubs and trees and planting and these, the rock garden on both sides. That is all the great work of the team at ProTurf. They can do this in your yard and they want to do it in the fall because the soil is a little cooler. It's a great time to plant new trees and shrubs. ProTurf can hook you up. They are a Minnesota company. And if you spend 4,000 bucks or more on a landscape, they're giving you a free tree. Now, trees are expensive, right? You, uh, can get a free evergreen tree, a Colorado spruce, six footer, or a two inch sugar maple, free with a $4,000 project or more. Limited time offer, so you got to make that call today. 952-469-8680, or log on the website. That's the easiest way. Get to my landscape experts at professionalturf.com.
This is Greg Trzynski from the Original Mattress Factory. Parents, before you buy your student's mattress online, consider this. At OMF, we offer the same convenience, but with major advantages. You can actually try our mattresses before buying. Crucial for your student's comfort. You'll know exactly where your mattress comes from, right here in our local factory. By supporting the Original Mattress Factory, you're investing in our community. And here's the kicker, you'll pay less than you would online. Quality sleep, local support and better prices. OriginalMattress.com.
I've been turning wrenches for nearly 20 years. And for the longest time, it was chaos. Communication was spotty, PMs got missed, downtime skyrocketed and accountability practically impossible. Then we switched to MaintainX. Total game changer. Now the whole operation runs through the MaintainX app. Work orders, safety procedures, parts inventory. I manage it all in one place with real-time updates. No more delays, no more surprises.
MaintainX helps maintenance teams run smarter, faster and more efficiently. Thousands of frontline teams trust MaintainX to maximize uptime, cut costs and stay audit ready. Start your free trial at maintainx.com. That's maintain and the letter X dot com.
I'm Ed Evans, CEO of Consumer Cellular. We're dedicated to serving people 50 and up like me. Our needs are different. Big wireless wants us in an unlimited plan, but if you're not using all that data, you're probably getting used. At Consumer Cellular, we're focused on affordable, reliable plans, including data that suits your needs, not ours. Our plans start at just 20 bucks and you'll get the best customer service in the business.
Call 1-888-FREEDOM or visit consumercellular.com/fax. Plans include $5 credit for auto pay and e-billing. See site for additional facts.
Wesley Financial Group is not a law firm and Chuck McDowell, definitely not an attorney. This is Chuck. If someone talks you into buying something really silly and you want to get out of that silly little thing, my advice, get the fax. Call me and I'll send you our timeshare exit kit absolutely free. Inside, you'll learn how timeshare works and all your options for cancellation.
Call Wesley now for your free timeshare exit information kit. 800-384-9393. That's 800-384-9393.
I'm Kristen Press.
And I'm Tobin Heath.
We're World Cup winners, Olympians and the hosts of The Recap Show.
Every week we sit down with the icons, disruptors and game changers on the field and beyond it to talk victories, heartbreaks and everything in between.
We've built a space where athletes, change makers and people creating the future of women's sports can show up and show off as their full, unapologetic selves.
Follow and listen to The Recap Show wherever you get your podcasts.
Time to find out how it's moving on the roads and what's moving in via the skies. This is traffic and weather together on CCO, starting with a check of the commute.
Some slowing travel 394 eastbound coming in from 100 into downtown Minneapolis. North 35W jammed up past Franklin Avenue. Charlotte 169 northbound looking good, making the run from Highway 62 all the way up toward Highway 610. Jerry Peterson, News Talk 830 WCCO.
Mike Lynch here, and it goes without saying that Sweet Martha's Cookies at the Minnesota State Fair are the best. But did you know you could have Sweet Martha's Cookies year round? That's right. Sweet Martha's Cookie Dough available in all kinds of flavors in the frozen food department of your favorite grocery store.
Now the latest conditions and the outlook for the next few days with your CCO forecast.
We have got Sweet Martha's Cookies all over the place out here at the CCO booth. Uh, tonight it's going to be perfect, perfect cookie eating weather. Low of 61, open those windows tomorrow, 79 is the highs. Sunday, 80 is the high. Right now it is 76 and sunny at the state fair.
Courtesy of Lindis Construction, your trusted Minnesota and Wisconsin contractors for over 45 years, and the 2026 World Junior Hockey Championship. We're live at the Minnesota State Fair on News Talk 830 WCCO.
Let's take the current temp of your Minnesota Twins. Brought to you by Chef IQ Sense. Save 15% with code word WCCO at checkout now at chefiq.com.
I don't know, Dan, I think the temp of the Twins is delightful. It's a delightful temp.
I mean, if you can focus on like the first six innings, like Dan Hayes was saying, yeah, then they're doing wonderful.
I don't know, 710 start at Target Field.
Oh, it's going to be a brilliant weekend for baseball.
Right? Come on, like.
The Padres are in town, you know?
Go have some fun. Go tonight, go tomorrow. We gave away tickets to the Saturday game on Twins Ticket Tuesday. So enjoy it, enjoy it. How good, what is the real temp of the team? You know, icebox.
Pretty much.
It's fine.
Pretty much.
It's fine. Hey, we had so much fun out here at the fair.
Yeah, it's always great.
This, I think this fair, I've been coming out here for 23 years. And this is about the nicest weather we've ever had for a state fair.
You know, no rainy days at all, no blazing hot days. Yeah, it's been pretty perfect.
Just fantastic. We've had some, oh, the cookies are, look at this. Look at this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
People bringing up the cookies. I'm, I'm going to gain a thousand pounds just by eating all the cookies everybody brings me. We'll see you Monday.
You know that feeling when you're about to cut into a juicy steak and hope it tastes as perfect as it looks? Well, worry no more. The Chef IQ Sense is a wireless cooking thermometer that eliminates under or overcooking your chicken, fish or meat, whether on the stove, top, oven or grill.